All right. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. I will call the meeting to order. All selectmen are present. Our first scheduled appointment this evening is Mary O'Brien Scholarship Committee with an announcement of the scholarship awards. Ms. O'Brien, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary O'Brien, and I am the Chair of the Southborough Scholarship Committee. And unfortunately, due to these unprecedented times, we were unable to have a live ceremony to honor our very deserving students this year. But we're very thankful to all of you, the Board of Selectmen and the town officials, for giving the scholarship committee the opportunity to present these awards this evening remotely. Before I do the presentation of awards, I just want to say a few words about the town scholarship program and its mission. Since its establishment in 1987, the Town Scholarship Awards have been bestowed upon a wide range of high school, seniors, and undergraduates as they embark on the next phase of their education. Ours is a pretty rigorous evaluation process, and our recipients each year have excelled academically, athletically, musically, and as well as being champions in service to their community. Since its inception, the Town Scholarship Program has awarded over 90 scholarships totaling more than $170,000. This year is no different. We are very excited this year to once again be able to award scholarships to six very accomplished students. We had many outstanding applicants this year, making the review process a very difficult one. All the recipients tonight should take great pride in receiving their awards. I'd also just like to take a moment to thank my fellow scholarship committee members Sally Hegarty, Renee Meyerana, Robert Stewart, and Isabel Murphy for all the work they did in the scholarship evaluation process. And now I'd like to move on to presenting the awards. I'm going to see if I can share my screen if that's okay. Let's see. Back up here. Let's see. Do I have it up? Now, I can't, I cannot think I can share it though, so. Okay, anyway, the first, we're presenting, now we're presenting the Capital Group Scholarships, and we have four recipients this year. The first awardee is Arthur Andreev. Arthur hails from Algonquin where he was a four-year member of DECA and the Speech and Debate Team. He plays the snare drum and was also a four-year member of the Jazz Ensemble. And add to that, Arthur is a competitive and accomplished fencer, having competed on the Junior Olympics fencing team. He will be moving on to University of Pennsylvania in the fall, and we are pleased to award Arthur a Capital Group Scholarship. David Keith is our next Capital Group recipient, and David was a four-year member of the JV and Varsity Volleyball Team at Algonquin, in addition to being a four-year member of the Jazz Club and a three-year member of the Varsity Math Team. He will be heading south in the fall to the Georgia Institute of Technology where he'll be majoring in chemical and biomacrolacular engineering, passionate about making a difference in climate change. We are honored to award David a Capital Group Scholarship. Our next recipient is Nadia Wong, and Nadia is an accomplished flutist. She played first flute for the Claflin Hill Youth Symphony Orchestra. She also led and organized two piano concerts to raise money for Boston Children's Hospital during her high school career. She participated in the Junior Toastmasters Club, which promotes and teaches leadership and communication skills. She will be attending Cornell University in the fall, majoring in computer science, and we are thrilled to award Nadia with the Capital Group Scholarship. Our final recipient of the Capital Group is Joseph Zhang, and he is an ultimate business innovator. Not only has he, was he a former member of DECA and the Speech and Debate Team, he also managed to create a, found a website known as BusinessWithStories.com, interviewing online successful businesses as well as creating a financial wellness algorithm for asset trading. Joseph will be attending Yale University in September, and it is with great pleasure that we award Joseph a Capital Group Scholarship. All right, so now we'll move on to the Carol Harris Scholarship, and our recipient this year is Abby Dunsmore. Abby is an accomplished gymnast. She has excelled as an athlete in the sport as a four-year member of the gymnastics team at Algonquin, and she's also taken the time to give back as a gymnastics instructor. She plans to continue competing in gymnastics while at college and ultimately obtain her certification to coach and instill in others a true love and passion for the sport. Abby will be heading out west to the University of Massachusetts in Amherst for college. Please join me congratulating her on being awarded the Carol Harris Scholarship. And final, final recipient this year is for the Southborough Town Scholarship, and that's Caroline Warren. Caroline also hails from Algonquin, where she was a four-year member of the Harbinguer, the school's newspaper. Caroline was also a four-year member of the Wise Club, which supports and promotes women pursuing STEM careers. She will be heading to the University of Connecticut in the fall, where she plans to major in health sciences. It gives us great pleasure to award Caroline the 2020 Town of Southborough Scholarship. So this concludes our awards presentation. I'd once again like to recognize and thank my fellow scholarship committee members for putting in countless hours during this evaluation and review process and trying to choose among so many talented and gifted students. And I'd once again convey a very heartfelt thanks to all of you, the Board of Selectmen, not only for allowing us to present these awards tonight, but we're always honored to have one of you in attendance at our ceremony each year, congratulating the students on behalf of the town, and that's really, we're very grateful for that. Little bit of corniness here. And finally, please join me again in congratulating our scholarship recipients. I'm not sure if any of them were even on. I told them all about it, but I wanted to leave them and all of you with a simple quote from a song by the musical artist Whitney Houston. She says, "I believe that children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way." Especially in these times that we're living in now, we really need them. We know that they've been taught well by their families and their teachers, and we look forward to them building a brighter and better world as they begin their journey to lead the way. Thank you very much.
Mary, thank you very much for joining us tonight and taking the time to do it, and thanks to everybody on your committee, and also congratulations to all the recipients of the scholarships. Great job by each of you. And I know I've had the pleasure of attending your ceremony several times with my time on the board, and you know, I miss it this year. You know, it's usually a beautiful night, beautiful spring night, like tonight at the Community House, and it's a nice opportunity to interact with each of the awardees, so. But thank you for continuing with the efforts that your committee did to make sure that the scholarships were awarded, and hopefully we can get back on track to being normal next year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Next appointment, Tim Davis, Recreation Director with the Recreation Update.
Let me just move him up, Brian.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Tim. How are you?
I'm doing very well. How are you?
Very good. You've got the floor.
Excellent. Thank you. So thanks for having me. I'll try not to take too much of your time. I know it's a lengthy agenda, but I just wanted to join you all tonight to kind of give an update on recreation as the COVID situation has impacted us pretty significantly when we look at services. Our largest recently being the decision to cancel summer camp for our community. So what I like to do is just kind of brief you and the public on the kind of the decision process with summer camp. And then I think I'd just like to take a moment and talk to you all about currently what we're doing from a program standpoint, facility standpoint, and just a couple, couple of other things that we have going on. So to start with camp, I think I want to start by saying, you know, two things. One, the decision that we made was, was by no means an easy one, and you know, we were very, very mindful and aware of the impact that this was going to have on the families in town. But in the same token, I want to, I want to thank the families and the residents of our town because the the understanding and the support that we received from making, you know, such a, such a difficult decision was, was somewhat overwhelming. It wasn't what we expected, so, so we really were thankful for all the families and individuals who reached out individually to, to, to express their gratitude for, you know, the work that we've been doing. So, so just to dive into it, you know, over the last six to eight weeks, I would say mainly, you know, our department has been participating very heavily in both state and national planning sessions on what summer camp can look like and programming can look like as it relates to summer services. And you know, these are sessions by the Massachusetts Rec and Park Association, National Park and Rec, American Campus Association, so on and so forth. As this, this was a national, you know, a national situation, especially, you know, the one thing all rec departments really do have in common is summer camp, and it is somewhat their biggest, their biggest season. And the, the issue that we found kind of throughout the whole entire process was that our ability to run our program was going to be dependent on the state's release of guidelines for, for summer camp and for childcare services. Everything that we, we did, you know, leading up to the last couple of weeks was really based on speculation. And that was based on what surrounding states were doing, the actions that they were making, the moves they were making. And, you know, talking with other departments in our state, in our region, and in other regions on what they were planning to do. And, you know, we had word that these guidelines were going to be released back in the start of May, but they were actually just released yesterday, yesterday afternoon. So, you know, the scheduling piece of that too just, just became a big, a big concern for us of the unknown. But also, you know, every, every conversation we had, we found that it really came back to, to the issue of safety. It came back to the question of, is this safe for the community and, and is it worth it? You know, we talked about this safety, that it wasn't just the kids, it was the kids' families, it was their extended families, it was our staff, our staff's families, our own department's families, and it was such a broader picture when we talked about it than just what was going on, you know, potentially within the building of our camp. And the fact that, I think, if I could say, I think rec summer camps were going to be arguably the first mainstream program to be allowed in the Commonwealth when it came to childcare outside of the essential childcare. And that idea was not, not lost on us, and that pressure was not lost on us. But also the fact that, you know, Southborough has been very vigilant, I think, and responsible in the acceptance of social distancing and the precautions that are being put out by the Board of Health. It kind of added another layer of responsibility on us, on, on our department, on the decisions that we were going to make. So safety, safety was, was above everything else. And, you know, I was, I was thinking about this tonight and how to put it in the words, and it really came down to three significant things that happened over the course of a few days that I think changed the course for us as a, as a program and as a department. And the first being that Fay School canceled their summer program, and the day after Fay School canceled, Northborough canceled, citing the same concerns that we had. And, you know, these are, you know, our closest colleagues, I think, in town, and, you know, Northborough being one of the largest public programs around us. You know, and I spoke to Fay quite often throughout this. They've been, they've been wonderful in sharing their perspectives and their planning processes. And, you know, I have been, I'm very friendly with, with Northborough, and it seems like I talk to her every single day. But they were really the first chips to fall that really, I think, hit home to us when it came to summer program. So that was somewhat of an eye opener for us to, you know, really further even think about what we're going to do. But next was the American Campus Association put out their recommendations on recommended practices, and the practices they put out covered protocols from, you know, taking temperatures of every child that entered the program every single day, you know, the cleaning of the equipment multiple times a day, cleaning of toilets and restrooms by our staff, keeping the kids distant through activities, and, you know, protocols for what to do if we get word that one of our campers and our kiddos test positive for COVID. And it was just a really daunting thing to read, and, and, you know, when, when we think of staff, you know, yes, you know, it'd be me and Alex and Denise and college-aged individuals, but we have 14, 15, 16-year-old kids on site who would be, you know, absorbing this responsibility. And again, it came down to that question of safety and comfort level with them. And that's the, really the third point. We took it upon ourselves to kind of get ahead of it, and we talked to our staff that we had hired. You know, we are, we were very, very proactive because we were very excited for this, this camp season. So, once everything shut down, we were already fully staffed. So we took time to reach out to all of our camp staff, our directors and our counselors. We explained to them what we believed was coming in the form of the guidelines and what camp was going to look like. And we really, we gauged their, their comfort level, and, you know, the overwhelming response was a hesitation and, you know, some, a lack of comfort of what camp was, was going to look like. Because again, you know, these are 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds, some their first jobs, their first opportunity of employment, and you know, now they're going to be responsible for protecting kids from a pandemic. You know, it was a very, very tricky situation, and we were very sympathetic to that. And, you know, throughout the process, you know, we lost some staff because staff were proactive on their end, and it's something they weren't, they weren't comfortable with, so they, they dropped and they withdrew their employment from us for the summer even prior to this conversation. So again, it was just the safety aspect that kept coming in, and, you know, again, so many unknowns from, you know, if we needed more staff than we already hire, program supplies, PPEs, the access to our facilities with the schools. So there are just so many question marks. So, you know, ultimately it came down to myself, Alex and Denise, you know, doing one of our weekly meetings and just throwing the cards on the table, and then ultimately, you know, making the decision to recommend to our commission that we cancel. And it was simply, simply out of safety, out of our staff, out of the kids, out of the families of our town, that we just, we weren't willing to take the risk of either one kid or staff member getting sick. So that is ultimately why, why we made this decision. And, you know, a lot, a lot of this may be known because I know we talked at length about this at our commission meeting. But again, I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight and kind of put it on the table as well for anyone who's watching to really understand that it wasn't a simple decision that we made. Because, you know, on a personal level, camp is the reason I got into this profession back when I was a teenager. It made me fall in love with it. So, you know, canceling a program of this magnitude of something that has a personal, you know, close meaning to myself as well was, was very, very hard. But I think that, that kind of brings me to part two of this whole conversation of, you know, what are we doing now? You know, there's, there's departments that are being really decimated, I think, by, by this, by this situation of, you know, and departments who are really, really dependent on their summer to, to get through the rest of the year. And I, and I think that's where, you know, we can rely on the uniqueness of, of our department and how we are, we are active, I think arguably more outside of the summer than we are during the summer. So, you know, currently we're still dealing with camp cancellation-related issues, you know, we're refunding, refunding quite a lot, tracking those. We're, we're helping families who are, who are really in need of childcare, trying to recommend services to them and working with other groups in town to get those filled. And, you know, Alex is really working with our vendors that we had scheduled to look ahead and see where we may be able to utilize their services either in the near or the distant future, as I know they are all struggling as well. But programming-wise, you know, we're collaborating extensively currently with youth and family, with the library, with the senior center. We're assisting them with, with their own program-related services. We're kind of coming together as one big human service umbrella through this whole thing. You know, they're utilizing our software and our outreach tools to assist in their programming efforts. To date, we put out about 14, 15 programs collaboratively. On the rec side, we're doing a lot of free programming, kind of centered around, you know, wellness, personal wellness. So we're doing yoga classes and meditation classes, and between those two classes alone, we've had over 100 register throughout the town, so they've been received very well and, and are really outstanding. And our instructors have been excellent and understanding on their end to work with. In our immediate future, you know, we're looking at our summer movie series that we had scheduled. We're looking at our summer concerts. We're working with Board of Health and Emergency Management to see if we're able to still run those with, you know, guidelines in place when it comes to distancing, whether it be soon, whether it be later in the summer. But we're trying to save those programs just to give, you know, again, our community something free, something to do outside to come together. But, you know, kind of like what I just mentioned, you know, and I think what I mentioned, I think the first time I ever came in front of you all for an update was that our department's kind of an outlier as it comes to programs outside the summer. So we are, we're already actively planning the fall out of necessity because we have to. And, you know, we, even though we don't know what the fall schedule will look like, we are talking to the superintendent's office to make sure that we're on the same page as we were during the summer. We just saw that survey go out to parents recently in the last couple of days about the different type of schedules the kids could be looking at, so that kind of gave us some fuel to start looking at potential options for contractors and start reaching out to our contacts to see what may be possible. But, you know, this is the time we start, start planning the fall, and it's mainly due to publication deadlines, our brochures, and getting information out. And while, yes, it looks different right now, you know, that schedule necessarily has not changed. So we are still actively looking ahead in hopes that we know there's going to be a new normal, but just planning, kind of like we did camp of all the different situations and all the different possible outcomes that, that September, October, November could look like. And then, you know, last, on my end, the spring kicked off another construction season in town. Last year, we finished the track, kind of my first, I think my first summer, my first, you know, start to this position. We were able to get that track done over at Trotter. In the offseason, we worked really hard on De Petrie Field with that bid package. We ended up going out three times with it, constantly tweaking it as it came, came back, and I'm happy to see that we finally broke ground on that project last week. So De Petrie Field is under construction currently. You know, the weather looks great coming up, so we're hopeful to be in and out for, you know, a two- to three-week, two- to three-week project. And that, that project's kind of lining up that once that's done within the next week or two, we're going to replace that playground behind Townhouse. That was a fun little project, so we're excited to install that. So that's looking to be done early July, mid-July, so that project will be done. And then we're, as always, you know, we're continuing to more heavily now, much more heavily now, and we're making movement on the lighting projects at Mooney and Nearie. We've made some significant progress in the last few weeks really regarding some dedicated engineering services and, and meetings with the planning department to ensure we can get things going. We have, like I said, dedicated engineers now, additional engineers now working on the projects. And I know from talking to them and talking to the firm that they're, they're off and running compiling what they need. So we're hopeful to see some next step coming about, you know, the next probably two to three weeks. And, and I guess last but not least, which I think is on a lot of people's minds, is the reopening of the fields and the reopening of the facilities. We are, you know, we're slowly doing it. We are making sure that they're opened on a schedule that's agreeable to our town, to the, the public health agents in town, public safety representatives, and in a way that, you know, the emergency management team, Board of Health, seems safest for the community. We are operating at a slightly different schedule than the state, but we're doing our best to make sure we're again, you know, opening, opening properly so that when baseball returns, when soccer returns, and when our public permitted groups returns, the, the guidelines will be in place. We'll be, we'll be sure they're being followed, and, you know, and overall that the town is comfortable having, you know, large crowds gather once again on town-owned property to get back to, to a normal and to, to reach that Phase Four, Phase Five, you know, business as usual. So that, so I just talked a lot. I don't know how long that was. I apologize. Obviously, you know, these are unprecedented. I always joke, this is, you know, this is nothing what they taught me when I was at school of dealing with this, but we're doing the best we can. We are staying as busy as possible, and some days we're always saying we're way more busier than we were if we were going to be in the office from home. But I answer any questions you have, entertain any questions you have, and again, thank you for the, the time to come in front of you and chat with you.
I appreciate it, Tim, and I can assure you that it's not, dealing with this pandemic is not on the Board of Selectmen handbook that passed out as well. But, Mr. Kalenda, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shea. So, Tim, thank you for the update. You know, we absolutely are blessed to have you as part of the town, so great work that you continue to do for us and our kids. So the state obviously put a lot of thought, you know, from what I've seen, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been very conservative in their, you know, in a good way to make sure that the, the public is, remains safe and that the curve, you know, is, is handled, and, and we've seen that happening dramatically, which is wonderful. So obviously, they put a lot of time, thought, effort, and data analysis into their reopening of the Commonwealth and the phases and the, and the projected timing of that, which includes a, an end-of-June timeframe for organized activities to reopen, which is Phase Three. And that would include things like, you know, Southborough Youth Baseball. Do you plan on, does the Town of Southborough plan on following those guidelines? And if, and if not, what is the data that, that says to either our Board of Health or others, you or others, that says, well, the state has suggested Phase Three can start June 28th, I believe? But Southborough is much different than that. So Southborough needs to be maybe, you know, the end of July or end of August, or who knows when. I mean, what is the, do we plan on following the state guidance, and if not, why not?
I think that we're, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'll let Mark chime in if he wants to. You know, the advice we're receiving and our department is coming from the Board of Health, and it's coming from the Emergency Management Team with, you know, Chief Achilles and his colleagues. I, I do believe, so the initial response was to be conservative on Southborough's side, as you know, as a lot of people know, of an August 1 date to reopen our fields, the permitted groups, with the, with the notion that that is subject to change. When that decision was made, I think that was, you know, day one or day two of after the, the reopening was announced. So, you know, again, that, that date is subject to change. Mark, I don't know if you can speak more to the data or the, or the, the reasoning that, you know, the Board of Health and crew have put that, put that date forward and the guidelines they put on it?
Thanks, Tim. So I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to attempt to speak for the, for the Board of Health or for, for Chief Achilles as the Emergency Management Director. I, you know, I try to follow the data, I think, as same as a lot of people on a daily basis. I think by comparison, Southborough was doing very well, and, and that's a, you know, a testament, I think, to our team. But again, this is a data-driven, you know, decision, and, you know, things, things change, you know, very quickly. If things go better, then maybe we can open things up earlier. If they don't, then maybe that August 1st date isn't as real as we thought it was. So, I mean, I really don't have a better answer than, than what Tim put forth right now.
And I will add, you know, I do speak to the chief regularly. I do have a meeting with him tomorrow morning to discuss fields mainly. That's the purpose of our meeting, to discuss fields. So, you know, that concern is going to be raised because I know that there are groups who are frustrated with it, and I, you know, I sympathize with the frustration that, you know, I somewhat hold the key to the fields and I, and I'm not using them for, for programming as well. So, you know, I understand baseball's frustration and soccer and the other, other teams getting in. So I'm hopeful after tomorrow morning's meeting, we're going to have a, a better understanding if that, if that date is going to be moved up.
Just because I- I guess what I, what I don't understand, and I think you're going to have lots of parents not understanding as well, unless the town and the Board of Health comes out with some very specific data that says the state's doing X, the vast majority, if not all of our surrounding towns are also following the state guidance, we, the Town of Southborough, are going to do something much different. And if we, the Town of Southborough, say that we're not going to allow organized activities until the August timeframe, while all the other surrounding towns have already started their seasons in, you know, organized gameplay for the state guidelines, what's going to happen to all the kids in Southborough who now can't use our fields, who now can't play, who now can't, you know, have games here? Are they going to always have to go elsewhere? I mean, the data had better be really definitive to say that our town, this cluster, we must have- to say that our town, this cluster, we must have, I don't know if we have a dramatic increase in cases. I'm not aware of that. Or if it's just out of a an extreme overabundance of caution. If that's the case, I think the we owe it to, you know, to our little leaguers, to our parents, you know, to provide that data that backs up that decision.
Yeah, and I I agree with you. I I think that's fair. I I think that, you know, it's a the idea of transparency, especially when it comes to this thing. And then again, like Mark said, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for the Board of Health and, you know, and their decisions on on why they did it and the data that base they have. You know, all I can really say is I'm I'm hopeful that it's going to move up. And after, you know, my meeting with Chief Achilles, I'm happy to to follow up with you and the rest of the board to and I'll bring up these points as well. And and see, you know, what comes out of it. And if it's, you know, hopefully, it's it's moving up the date. And if not, I'll hopefully be able to provide you some significant reason of why so that we can we can let our both our permit groups and and our parents know.
Yeah, Mark, I'd like to know what that Board of Health data is. So I haven't I haven't seen it. I haven't heard. I suspect other members of the board would like to know what that data is. That might be different than other towns if there is, you know, and if if we are alarmed about something, I think we owe it to the residents to tell them what that is. And if it's if it's there's really no alarm, I and the decision was made for another reason, I think we we owe it to our residents to tell them what that is, too.
But I guess I'll just jump in here. I think like Tim, I'm hopeful the date can be advanced. But I'm also cognizant that, you know, the the dates that were released in the phasing through the governor's office are all subject to change and and moving backwards in phasing depending how the data plays out. And hopefully, we don't enter into a second wave that causes the whole state to move backwards as well. So hopefully, we can continue to have everybody do their part, keep up with this distancing that we're doing, and just so, you know, we can be in a position to get fields open as quickly as possible.
Right. And I I agree, Brian. That's why the date was, you know, said as projected. I would assume Southborough was going to also have that date, the same date as a projected date. And if something alerted us that, whoa, we can't do that date now, we would clearly put that guidance out to the community with good data and they would accept it.
And we've got nothing to gain by not being transparent in the discussion.
Right. So I just haven't seen it. And I don't think the people who play the sports who are affected by this have heard that data either. So I think it's, I mean, why not share it then?
Right. And I and I think so.
We just don't know what it is.
So let Tim, let Tim have his conversations with, you know, with our public safety and with the Board of Health and gather that information. And then that information can be brought back, you know, to this board and to, you know, and to the residents and make sure that everybody, you know, understands what, you know, what information is the basis for the decisions being made.
That's fair.
Other questions? Jeff, go ahead, Lisa.
So I just wanted to thank you, Tim, and and thank the Recreation Department as well. I know how hard the decision was on summer camp, and I know how many parents were looking forward to summer camp. And I know the impact of it. I've spoken to a lot of parents and it was a bright spot in everybody's eye. And it's unfortunate that it didn't happen. But I just wanted to thank you and your department for always advocating and being available to our families. And even now, still continuing to do the things you're doing and working with other departments as well. So please, I'm on our behalf, thank thank the Recreation Department for the professionalism they've shown during this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Other questions, comments?
Brian, very, very quickly. Hey, Tim, this is Marty. Thanks for the update. And it's a shame about the summer, but perfectly understandable. In terms of the of the the lighting, I mean, one of the one of the few unintended consequences that's been a plus about the, you know, the pandemic has been, you know, there's a relatively clear field for construction projects. And, you know, things aren't as clogged up as they might have been because there's just not as much traffic and construction crews are available. So is there, you mentioned two to three weeks in terms of of engineering on the lighting side. Is it possible that on one or both of the fields that the lighting is going to be done this summer?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes or no to that. But, you know, we are hopeful with the schedule that we have now in place. And, you know, like I said, you know, before we were, I guess, a slight backstory. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But, you know, before we were working with our engineering firm, we had one individual who was putting together plans more as a he he's the, the firm has done almost all of our fields in the last couple of years in the projects and the track and and things we have going on. The the plans that he put together were were somewhat of a favor or a smaller, you know, a smaller pay scale of what you would normally get as we didn't anticipate the projects running into as many roadblocks as it did, just with, you know, more questions and more clarifications on a lot of the, a lot of the 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 prints and the plans and what was being submitted to the board. So, you know, fast forward, you know, literally, I think the day before the town went went into, you know, work at home lockdown, we met with the planning board, the planning department, town council, everything to really hash out what we needed to do to get this project to the finish line. Just because I want to, I want it off my desk. I know baseball really wants them. They've been patient and incredible partners, you know, working with me once I came into the office to to get this towards the finish line. And what was agreed upon is that there needed to be an a dedicated, you know, full time engineer to do A, B, C, D, you know, all the way through of this project to get it to where the planning board wants it in front of them, complete for approval to move to construction. So we reached out to our engineering firm. We got a quote on what would it would take for those services for for Nearie as well as Mooney for the baseball fields. And then we went to the CPC, as these are funded articles, and we asked to dip into the contingency funds of those articles to fund these engineers to, like I said, take full full action on it and get it rolling. So, you know, I am hopeful that we can get something going by the end of construct of the construction season, yes. I see no reason why we won't be able to. But it, you know, we are, we're in the beginning phases of it. We're collecting the information between the town and what the what the firm has kind of in the first step, and then we'll move forward. So I'm hopeful by the end of this construction season this year that that we'll have have some candles in the ground. But, you know, there's there's a lot that needs to be done between the town and the planning board and and everything in between. So I'm hopeful and I'll and I'll keep my fingers crossed. And I know that's not the answer you probably wanted, but I'm just trying to be realistic on this.
No, it no, it's a, it's 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 exactly the sort of answer I wanted, although maybe not the conclusion that I wanted. But it just would be a shame while the fields are sitting there not being used and construction needs to be done on them, that the two of them can't be done at the same time. That would just be a shame. So that's all. Thanks very much.
All right. Tim, thank you for joining us.
Hey, Tim, do you have, do you have a timeframe where you use, you know, we need to go, you know, per Marty's kind of query, we need to, you know, get to these steps in this timeframe and in front of planning by X date in order to have, you know, poles in the ground by X date, you know, when's that last date when construction can start working this season? And then working backwards from that, do you have a timeline that you can share with us that shows all the hoops that you're looking to to go through to make it happen?
I don't have a timeline as I sit here tonight. I think it's going to depend on when, you know, our next, the next slotted meeting that we're we're hoping for with our engineers next week or two to really see what he has and what he needs. And I think that's going to determine the next steps and the timeline of, like I said, just the next steps of where we need to go. So I'm hopeful, I can probably say within the next, you know, two weeks, I should have an idea of of a target date. Then again, I'm happy to share with you.
If you would share that with the board, that would be great. Thank you, Tim.
All right. Again, Tim, thank you for the update. Very thorough. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. You, too.
Great. Next, Jason Malinowski, Public Safety Building Committee update. Hey, Jason, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I think Vanessa has the slides. I'll just walk through very quickly. But while she pulls them up, just wanted to kind of give overview of this is the last official business of the Public Safety Building Committee. We're candidly hopeful that you vote to dissolve us. I think that's one of your items later in the evening. But we view our work is complete at this point. I will walk you through a few minor open items that the committee has authorized Mr. Purple and myself to work through. You know, as as it comes, you know, to the end here, and obviously, the chiefs and Mr. Parent are also very involved with the operation of the building at this point. Vanessa, I'll have you just, you know, I've said this before, but this committee, right, and you really gelled on all levels. And, you know, I just want to give one final thank you to all of them. It was a tremendous team. I think all of you know every one of them very well at this point, based on the number of interactions we've had here over the three to four year time period. But honestly, we couldn't have done it without the collaboration amongst this team, working together with many other boards and committees. In terms of where we stand, we are still engaged with the general contractor. We do still owe them some money that we've withheld on some punchless items. And we do some minor landscaping, including the grass up out front that needs to be finished. But, you know, we probably would be done with all those items if it hadn't been for COVID. As you all know, that building was shut pretty early on in the process here of responding to the pandemic. So, you know, they the contractors haven't been allowed back in to finish some of the things. The nice thing is they are still very well engaged. There was a flurry of emails even as latest today on on a lot of these items. So we are very confident contractors still engaged and is going to start to work through some of the final items. None of these items are impacting the service in the building at at this point. And, you know, they're just items that have been long outstanding at this point and just need to find the right people to work through. Even some of the contentious ones, the general contractor has been very willing to work with us and work through some of the issues with their own subcontractors, which in most instances, they didn't choose. So just based on the way the bidding process works, there will be a walkthrough coming up here at the 10 month point for move in, so midsummer, just to go through the final warranty items and make sure they're all kind of buttoned up and documented before we kind of own the building 100%. The last time I spoke to, believe it or not, was back in in the fall, in the September timeframe. At that time, we really had the only one issue we had with the building with the driveway. Kudos to Karen Galligan and her team for quickly resolving that, the public for providing feedback. And we really found a very quick and easy solution to a lot of that, that I think met the, you know, the praise of of many people. So we haven't heard any complaints about it since, which is great. And as I mentioned, there's just a few minor invoices that are outstanding and are and have been factored into some of the numbers I'm going to walk you through. I left this slide in here. I'm not going to rehash it. This is the same slide I had here in September, but our goal is to have this this document also function as a final report that the town can publish on behalf of the committee. So I'm not going to rehash any of this. So this slide dated as of yesterday really has not changed since September. And I think that's a really good thing. You know, we had a big, you know, caution sign, you know, there's still some items that we're still working through. This is our best projection. It's moved slightly and it's moved slightly in terms of the favorable bucket. You know, we had been projecting that we were going to save $3 million. We're now at about 3.1 that we feel confident that we're going to be able to save. So while you do have a warrant article at the town meeting in a couple of weeks that we hope will get unanimous consent to rescind the first 3 million, we're hopeful that there's actually a small little supplemental in the fall or next spring to kind of bring the project to a close. But we do obviously have that flexibility if there is something unforeseen that we haven't stumbled across here in these these first eight months. But the good news is it's trended the right direction still as we've closed the project out. In terms of what that all that all means, you know, this is what we had told the taxpayers it costs. It was going to be a gross cost of $391 a year. When you net that against some of the school debt that's retired retiring in the coming years, we were thinking a net cost per household over the 30 year time period of only of $137. When you slide to the next slide, our final impact here. And this is based on a number of things. Remember, we were able to reduce, we didn't bond over 30 years. It was over a 25 year time period. We were able to take advantage of the town's AAA bond rating. We're thinking we're going to save over $10 million over the life of, you know, these bonds here that the town and the residents will have to pay over the coming years. But really what we've done is if you if you use the gross cost per household that was messaged to town meeting and when the voters stood up and approved it, and you look at what we're seeing, the gross cost of this project's going to be, it's only two, it's 295 versus 391. So we're savings in 94. And that's a pretty good percentage, you know, in in our in our eyes of, you know, we didn't take a budget and say, this is what we're going to spend. We took a budget as an anchor point and really worked to manage it. And I'm going to get to that and is part of our contingency. A lot of these are going to be very familiar to you, but the one thing I just really wanted to highlight, because this isn't going to be the last capital project this town did, is one of the main contentions that we had early on was how much contingency and how much should you budget when you go to town meeting? Even though we had what we believed in industry standard contingency, we spent less than 30% of that through the project. We could have spent 100% and still had a good story. But there really was tremendous discipline around the change orders and making sure that the town wasn't just accepting something to accept something, move the project forward. And when you kind of look at all that's happened in the world, you know, whether it be with pandemic or tariffs or anything else, you know, we really did strike gold here in terms of the timing of the building and when this all kind of came to fruition, which was because we had our our foot on the pedal the entire way through the process. And, you know, just to give you an example of of some neighboring communities that are going through this now, you know, to even do work on their site, imagine what our site looked like last last spring around this time if the pandemic had occurred there. They have limits on the number of people they can have on site. They have to do temperature checks. All those things are adding double digits in terms of tens of thousands dollars per month to how these projects are running. So again, something we were very lucky to avoid that through luck. But, you know, the discipline around the contingency, we really felt was the the differentiator here. And I guess, you know, in in closing, as you think about the discussion you're probably going to have in a couple of minutes here in terms of the impact to next year. I worked with Brian Ballantyne and said, you know, if if we had just gone with the $22.6 million budget that the town had approved, and you kind of kept all the interest rates, kept all the AAA bond rating, kind of all that static, you know, what would have happened to taxes next year if we hadn't saved kind of this top line number? It comes up to $170,000 that we were able to kind of cut right out of the debt budget for next year that theoretically would have been in there if we acted within the bounds of the budget that town meeting approved. So, you know, I know Mark has said this many times, both in our meetings and in your meetings, you know, as you think forward, right, you know, this project and the savings that are associated with it, even if someone didn't agree with the overall concept, whether it was too big, whether it was too small, whether we had the right contractors, whether we had the right space requirements, you know, don't lose sight of of that savings, you know, down the road and just reallocate it somewhere else. Really, let's find a way to take that true savings and allocate it, you know, in a smart and fiscally disciplined way like we kind of tried to manage it for the rest of the year. And I think for all of you that supported us throughout the project, I know all of you weren't on the board the entire time, but a lot of you had roles on other committees if you weren't on the board itself. You know, your support really made our job that much easier. And obviously, we had the support of a lot of residents and a lot of other boards, committees and department heads, you know, both short term and long term. So thank you to all of you. And it's been a pleasure working together on this. And I think I speak for the entire committee of nine, you know, that we feel like we really have delivered to the town, you know, a first class project.
Very good. Jason, thank you very much. Great update as always, and tremendous success story as always. Any other questions, comments for Jason?
May Brian?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Just one, one word, Jason. Outstanding with a huge clap for your committee. Could not be prouder. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Great work. Excellent. All right.
Just Jason, do you want to lobby for having your committee disbanded? Or do you just want to accept it on, on faith that we'll do it for you?
Go up for reappointment if you decide to go to appointments. So, you know, and you have to approve our final sets of minutes too. Something we're very proud of to comply with all the openly meeting law requirements in the town code throughout. So we appreciate you approving our final minutes. So we don't have to call a meeting to approve multiple sets of minutes.
Okay, well done.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Next, Paul Semino, moderator regarding update on annual town meeting. Mr. Semino, good evening. How are you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Excellent. I'm great. Good evening to everybody. Yesterday, I, 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 I don't want to take up too much of the time for you guys tonight. I know your meeting is, your agenda is ambitious for tonight. Yesterday I made a, an update announcement confirming the date and time for town meeting, for annual town meeting is June 13th, next Saturday at 1:00 PM. I didn't, by the way, put in a rain date, but rain date for that, my intention would be Sunday, the 14th, same time, 1:00 PM. The, the location will be the athletic fields immediately adjacent to Neri School. The guidance from the Board of Health and Public Safety folks have caused me to abandon my, my, my wish to avoid weather contingencies and do this inside. Safety requires that we do it outside as a lot of other towns around us have done and will do. We will be at the Neri Athletic Complex, so not Trotter, but Neri, adjacent to the playground of the school where there is a small baseball field and three large soccer fields. Hopefully most folks know where it is that I'm talking about. We will have by that time made preparations to comply with, comply in or exceed all safety related guidance coming from the state, the local board of health, the public safety chiefs, et cetera. This will be a very unusual town meeting, obviously. But I have to thank the town clerk especially and the rest of the folks I've just mentioned for their, both their guidance and their collaboration in putting together a plan that will meet the needs of the town from a safety perspective, but also from a process and operational perspective. So the only other thing that I would like to mention is that because we will be outside, some of, you know, some of the, some of the severe urgency to shorten the meeting is, 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 you know, not in the same place that it was or would be if we were inside. I had previously previewed that I was contemplating putting together a package of articles that would be possibly deferred to the fall sort of en masse that, that we would try to propose to the town meeting floor that there was a lot to, that we could put off. I think that's still true. As moderator though, I, I don't intend to do that anymore. And, and the reason for this is that when we talked about, when I talked to town council about the legalities of that, one thing that came up that's important to understand is that the content, and it's important to remind, I think we all understand, but it's important to remind you folks and whoever, you know, anybody who's listening, that the Board of Selectmen controlled town meeting warrants, whether it's annual town meeting, special town meeting, whatever the case may be. The content of the warrant is controlled by the Board of Selectmen, whether it be individual articles or the placement of, of the order of the articles. Because obviously there is certain ability of citizens to put articles on a warrant via citizen's petition. So the plan to defer articles comes with, I think, the, I don't want to say obligation, but the, hopefully the intention of the Board of Selectmen to reassure the folks who are going to be asked to defer. And I'm avoiding, I'm using the word defer on purpose. Let's try to use that. It will be incumbent on the Board of Selectmen to assure those assembled that if they do defer articles out of convenience, that those will be back on a future warrant. And only the Board of Selectmen can do that. So.
Can I stop you right there?
I was just about to throw it to you, Brian.
Excellent. I appreciate it.
I was going to say with that sort of preview, Brian, take it away.
All right. So as I recall, when our board discussed this month and a half, two months ago, we had unanimously agreed to, that we would recommend taking action on 18 what we called critical articles and then deferring action on the remainder for the next available town meeting. It was always my intention that those articles would be deferred and that every single one of them would make its way onto the warrant at the next town meeting. So I'll just state, does, does everybody on the board agree with that? Or is there disagreement?
Absolutely.
Agreed. And Brian, if I may, the one thing I want to make clear is that, and the reason isn't simply for the convenience of town meeting. It's also concern about particularly regular attendees, but attendees at town meeting who regardless of the fact that it's outside and otherwise, other precautions that are being taken, might very legitimately be concerned about attending. And the, the hope that we'd have larger numbers at a future meeting and there'd be more public participation for important articles.
Correct. I agree with that wholeheartedly. And now, so one other question, my next question.
Hold on, Brian.
Now, I'm not, 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 I got one more point that I'm going to make first.
All right. I just want to address Marty. Go ahead. Go ahead.
The, um, don't make me mute you because I will. Is there, so because we now have a different venue and we are outside, is there a difference of opinion by, from anyone on the board to not defer those articles that we had chosen to defer first? Or are we still in agreement that we ought to defer that list of articles that we had recommended for the next available town meeting?
Still in agreement.
In agreement.
Agreement. All right. So Mr. Moderator, we are, our board is in agreement. And I would, I guess advise you that our board will be making a motion at the annual town meeting on Saturday at some point in time. And I want to do so in a manner that is proper that we recommend deferring action on that list of articles as we had discussed with you, you know, a month and a half, two months ago.
Brian, if I may, say, when you say make a motion, are you saying make a motion among this board if I'm hearing?
No, no, I'm saying that at the town meeting, we will make a motion to defer those.
But is that a motion entire town to act upon or the board act upon?
That meeting. So that's where we're, we're going to bring Mr. Semino back in if he can join in. But it's the town meeting that needs to take that vote. You know, we, it would be our motion, it would be our recommendation that that be the action the town meeting take. But town meeting must vote affirmatively for that to happen.
And that's what I thought too. My only, well, the only reason I asked Brian is because I thought I heard Brian say that it's up to this board, whether, you know, what articles are, you know, in what order, what articles are, you know, come before town meeting, but.
I think his point was that if we were going to defer action on the, the number of articles that we that we, that place, that we have those articles, the deferred articles on the next warrant that is available. That the point is not to defeat these articles now. The point is to hold off and let's take these articles up at the next available town meeting when people can gather in a more safe manner.
Right. And Brian, just one step further than if the town, if town meeting says, no, we don't agree with the board's motion, all of those come into play and we need to make sure that everyone who's involved in any of those on either side gets to that meeting.
Correct.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely.
In terms of the procedural process that will, will best fit what the intention of, of the board is, that's certainly something we can discuss offline between now and the 13th. Whether we can do this as a, as a, as a large group in one fell swoop or not, I, I am not at all sure. But even if we had to do it one at a time, it can be done very quickly, assuming town meeting is in agreement, as you said, Mr. Chair. When I say postpone for convenience, I mean, as opposed to substantively disposing. So there could be a lot of reasons, you know, safety reasons, public health. Maybe we don't have the attendance figures we were hoping for, as Marty pointed out, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not meaning to suggest the word convenience as being pejorative. So I just want to make sure to say that. So the process by which we, we will, by which this board, your board will make your recommendations and the motions in particular that will need to be made are things, are things we can collaborate on and make sure we have agreement on between now and the 13th. So I, I'm not intending to, to sort of walk through the specifics of that. Frankly, I'm not prepared to walk through the specifics of that, but something we can do in the next couple of days. Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I do have one sort of supplemental piece of legal advice to advise you about. It's, it's a, it's a good thing. And there was some question when this came up originally about whether the citizens petitions that are on the current warrant could be deferred in the same manner as just, you know, for lack of a better phrase, routine articles that others have sponsored individually. Obviously, the, the citizen's petition process and the Commonwealth is sort of sacrosanct and sort of the bedrock of, of, of town meeting and democracy the way we know it. And the suggestion that a citizen's petition could be deferred without impact was questioned. Since then, I've taken advice from town council, who himself has done some research and taken some advice from state authorities. And the answer is that it can be, meaning it can be deferred in a manner that will not burden the petition or the petitioner any further by having to wait for a special. The details of that we don't need to get into, but certainly we'll explain at town meeting on the 13th. And we could talk about offline between now and then. But, but town council assures me that, that, that the Board of Selectmen can sponsor the identical citizen's petition articles at the next, on the next warrant without the need for those particular citizens to regenerate the signature process, et cetera.
Okay. Very good.
So I'll, I'll leave it at that in my update. I know you guys had a long night tonight. If there's any questions, of course, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one, Brian, if I may.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, Paul. How you doing?
Hi, Lisa. Very good. Very good.
Just a quick question for you. I'm wondering if as we get closer to town meeting and we get a better handle on what the weather is going to be, will you be releasing another statement? I know some people are concerned if it's going to be too hot or whatnot sitting out in the, in the heat potentially. And if the requirements of whether or not they have to have a mask, I think there's just a lot of confusion from people on what's going to be required. So I was just wondering if you have any plans to address that closer to town meeting?
I do. I will be following the weather closely. We'll talk, talk about the, the weather part first and then I'll talk about the masks. Obviously, you know, weather, weather will be a, 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 a topic of, of attention as we come closer to that date. We won't know until fairly close to that date with any kind of, you know, good certainty that we are out, you know, that we are not, not subject to bad weather. So we will be looking at it closely. We'll make an announcement maybe as late as that Friday, whether we go that next day on Saturday or whether we'll have to put it over to Sunday. If we, if we have bad weather both Saturday and Sunday, then, then, then we'll see where we are. In terms of, you know, potentially it being a very hot day, honestly, I, I, I don't have an answer to that other than we are, we are planning to provide bottled water free of charge to the public. And we will, as we've been discussing tonight, try to keep the meeting as short as possible. As to masks, this guidance comes directly from the Board of Health. Masks, and they, and they have the power to, to, as you know, to make recommendations and to enforce the governor's orders. Masks are required in the Commonwealth unless you are able to social distance. We will have a socially distant setup in terms of seats, aisles, passageways, check in, check out, et cetera. Obviously, you know, we cannot, no one's going to be in a silo. People will be getting up, standing up, going to the microphone, going to the restroom, et cetera. So the guidance from the Board of Health is when you are sitting in your seat at town meeting, you may remove your mask. When you get up to move around to do any of the things I just mentioned, you need to have your mask on. So people want to know, will masks be required? And I guess the answer is yes, but yes, they will. But when you're sitting and you're six feet away from everybody else, feel free to take it off. That, that's the guidance from our, our Southborough Board of Health.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. I figured you thought it out, but I just figured I'd ask.
By the way, the, the microphone situation is something that comes up as well. I mentioned in my announcement that we're, we're going to have what are called shotgun microphones. That's, that's, I didn't know that's what they were called until a couple of days ago. But these are microphones that have the ability to be, to have what's called the gain increased dramatically so that the speaker that's not standing right next to it can still be heard very well. We will be physically containing the microphone, like literally you will not be able to get next to it unless you break down by snowfettes. Okay. So, so I give all the credit to Mr. Hegarty for working with some authoritative vendors to help set this up the way he has. And so people should be very comfortable with the way this is going to work.
Paul, a couple of questions that I know that are coming in. Is there a plan to have Girl Scout participation or is that not in the works this year?
My intention is that we would not be doing that.
Not this year. All right. And lastly, have.
We will have the pledge of allegiance, but we will have to manage to lead it ourselves.
Okay. And has accessibility considerations been thought of as well? I'm sure that they have, knowing the people that are planning this.
We're going to reserve parking closest to the area for handicap placards. The, the, the field area where we will be is relatively flat. And originally we were going to be over by the tennis court. So we realized there's quite a slope over there by the bandstand, tennis court area. We didn't want to deal with that. So now we're across the street where it's relatively flat. So parking close by for handicap placards and, and the ability for wheelchairs to roll will be accounted for.
Ryan?
Thank you. Yep. Sam, go ahead.
Couple of quick comments. So one, on the weather thing, I did take a look at the longer term forecast and it looks like low seventies maybe and partly sunny. So I hope that holds. Not perfect forecast, of course. Second, I share Marty's concern about deferring to allow for maximum participation for people who might have health concerns relative to COVID exposure in the near term here. I think there's another useful reason to consider as well, and that with the outside venue, I think it would be more difficult for people, particularly sponsors of. people, particularly sponsors of citizen petitions, to be able to communicate as they do indoors in terms of having, uh, video capabilities and so forth. And, uh, uh, more freewheeling discussion of those kinds of things with more participants outside than inside. So I think it's advantageous to defer till we can maybe find an indoor venue later to give those, uh, proponents a fair shake in terms of being able to communicate their proposals. So I continue to be supportive of the fall town meeting to handle deferred items. Thanks.
Paul, one other quick question. Um, and maybe this is a question for Jim, if it is, let me know. Has there been any discussion about childcare? Like there has, we have been able to provide in the past.
I can tell you there has not been a discussion, uh, with Jim about that. It is a question for Jim. Um, certainly something we will, uh, nail down and, and announce and update folks on, uh, sooner rather than later.
Right.
Ryan, if I may?
Go ahead, Dan.
It, Paul, has there been any agreement for, you know, the articles that we're suggesting can be postponed to a fall meeting? Has there been any agreement yet from the proponents of that in advance so that people can be assured they don't need to show up en masse to, uh, town meeting, you know, out of, you know, not knowing whether or not that vote is going to go yea or nay at the beginning?
So the very quick two-part answer is, as, as, as I understand it, all, all the proponents of the non-critical articles have indicated that they do not oppose deferring. That being said, Dan, as I think I said last time, town meeting can do what they want. I don't expect that town meeting would override the wishes of an article's proponent and force a vote, uh, when the proponents of the article themselves are not asking for a vote, but instead acquiescing to a deferral. I, I could, I could tell you with a hundred percent certainty how that would work.
Okay. I just think it'd be good to put that out to the public so that they have that at least some level of not assurance, but anticipation. Um, so that we don't have swarms of people at the doors because they just don't know. Um, you know, I think that would be helpful.
I agree. And my, my suggestion to Mark has been to, for you guys to settle on, uh, the list of article, I think maybe you already have it, but to publish a list of what you intend to suggest that we defer. And in doing so, you can also indicate that the sponsors, uh, don't object. That's my suggestion, and that is possible.
And Mar, I was just going to make that same comment to Mark. Mark, if you could issue that press release tomorrow just so that it appears on our website and other news agencies pick it up. Just to advertise as much as possible so that attendees to the town meeting are aware of the, you know, the, the plan that we have to defer action on, on, uh, on which articles.
So why don't I, uh, just to be safe, I'm using the, I'm using the, uh, Excel sheet with the list of the, uh, warrant articles from April 22nd, which I believe is the one that the board was provided, um, and the moderator has been provided, um, as to what are the critical articles? And then I think there were some suggestions as to what he, um, uh, the moderator could put on a consent agenda if he, if he, um, so chose. Um, why don't I put something together, Mr. Shea, and run it by you and the moderator, just to make sure that we're in concert with the message?
Well, I, you know, I think the most critical thing is getting the list of articles that will be, that we will be recommending deferment on out. Uh, how we work out the logistics on which can get bundled and not bundled. I don't want that to hold up, getting the information out. So as a start, get out, you know, delete that column or hide that column about, um, packaging them, but, you know, get the list out ASAP on those that we will be recommending deferment on.
Right. The only thing, yeah, so I'm happy to cut you out of the discussion, but I just want to make sure because some of the sponsors came back to me and said that was fine. Some of the sponsors came back to the moderator directly and said that was fine. So before I put that in writing and put that out, that people are kosher with deferring, I just want to make sure that that is in fact the case from one source or another. So, uh, that's, that's my bigger concern rather than, you know, showing the spreadsheet.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Guys.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Uh, next joint meeting with the Advisory Committee regarding FY21 budget. So this may take a minute to bring in Advisory Committee members. Looks like Vanessa is on, has started that effort. Give this just a minute.
I hope it's not an omen that just as this is starting, the, uh, it started to rain outside.
You know, 10 days, 10 days ago, they said it'd be a sunny day today. I don't know.
That's right. So much for forecasts, huh?
Yeah.
Get it out of the way, squeeze all that moisture out of the clouds next couple of weeks here.
Uh, let's see. So, um, Vanessa, I guess you could just shoot me a quick note if, uh, all the advisory folks are in, just so I know the restart.
That up right now. Um, Kathy, do you know what phone number Judy Buds is calling in on?
I don't, Vanessa.
Okay, I'll, I'll just, um, message her. And, um, do you need to share your screen at all?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
No. I don't think so.
No. Okay, great.
Um, so while we're waiting for Judy, why don't we get started? So Kathy, I presume that you, uh, had your meeting, uh, at six o'clock just before this. An advisory came to their senses and agreed with the Board of Selectmen on the recommended budget for FY21. So we can be through in about two minutes, correct?
First part's true, we did.
Okay. All right. So, um, so I guess so to focus the discussion. Um, I think there, I think there are two key ma- main points where there is disagreement between our board and the Advisory Committee. And I guess maybe if we could first focus on the new hires that are identified and the start date for those new hires. Um, the devoted position from our board at our last, or one of our last meetings was uh, to defer those hirings until January 1st. It appears that the advisory is looking for a July 1st start date for those positions. Uh, is that still the case, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. So who wants to take it from here then? I mean, obviously we have the two, uh,
So do we want to talk about why we believe, um, I want seven ones instead of January 1st?
Yeah. So I guess if, well, again, we're, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I'll just speak for myself. But I think that we're in a situation where, you know, certainly the end of January, February, whenever we settled on the budget that is printed in the warrant, I felt extremely comfortable at the time that that was a well-thought-out, well-planned budget. And in light of what has evolved in the country and the world since then, and in light of recognized shortfalls and revenues that we're going to have, I thought, I revisited that. I think there's still uncertainty in a lot of cases on the revenue side. And I don't want to be in a position where we are committing to bringing new staff onboard in a month, really, because that's when the budget's going to go into effect. When there's still that uncertainty and later on in the year have to be in a position where we're either going to have to get rid of those positions that we just hired or let other staff, uh, go potentially and, or reduce hours and have to take other action. And I just think a smarter move would be to defer those hirings until we can get a better picture on uh, how things are going to play out with the, on the revenue side of, of the budget. So that's why I supported, uh, deferring, um, bringing on the new staff to, uh, to January 1st. Um, you know, other board members, you know, on, on my side can speak for themselves and certainly advisory can speak as well to that.
If I may, Brian?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'll, I'll just kind of add to, to what Brian said. Um, I also supported the January 1st only because we don't know where the local aid is going to come back. I know we're budgeting 3% at this point. If it comes back a lot higher than we think, I know, um, the mayor in Marlboro had done an article on their budget and he said that the state is looking at a shortfall of as high as 15% for fiscal year 21. So I don't know where we're going to come in at local aid. I'm not comfortable taking that risk. Also, I understand the need for services and I understand that everybody has a need, but the taxpayers also have a need. And there are a lot of, um, a lot of taxpayers right now that have lost their jobs and I worry about us taking a position of hiring when other towns around us are furloughing and laying off. Um, so, you know, I know that we haven't seen a big hit in the, um, real estate taxes coming in yet, but I think when we had started this discussion with, with delaying it, Brian had said initially 80% came in, but I think that was because it was through escrow. So I'm not as concerned about, the banks are going to pay the taxes, but I'm concerned about the people that have to pay the mortgage. Um, and that are in fear at this point of potentially losing their home. So I just, for me, I'd like to know in September, we may have better numbers in January, we may have better numbers of what the local aid is going to be and if it's something that's sustainable and if we can afford. So that's kind of my position on why I selected January. Thank you.
And, and Kathy, this is Marty. Um, I, the question that I think, I don't think the question is, um, why does advisory think it's a good idea to have these position? The selectman thought it was a good idea to have these positions. We voted for them. There was a budget with those positions in it. So that's not, hearing about why these positions make sense really is not necessary. We agree with that. The explanation I would like to hear is why, and both Brian and, and Lisa framed it properly, we, you know, I'm not a young guy. My entire life, there's never been economic uncertainty like there is right now. And the position the Board of Selectmen has taken is that this is not the time to be adding new positions when two months from now, five weeks from now, we could find out that the bottom of the economy has fallen out even worse than it has. That the town's economy has fallen out even worse than it has. Um, and we already know that the state has been hit by enormous unemployment. So in a situation where the town of Southborough has not had to furlough anybody, the town of Southborough has not had to cut back any positions. Um, facing all of that uncertainty, why it makes sense for the town of Southborough to add positions in July when we don't know what's going to happen, maybe July 2nd, but certainly sometime between July and, and the decision point that we've identified, which is January 1. So that, it seems to me, is the question, not does it make sense to have these positions? We already answered that in the affirmative. Why does it make sense to have them necessarily on July 1 when we've lived without them up until now?
And I'll add the alternative view, if I may. Um, so we've lived without them for too long. And so the ones that we're talking about in, in, in our, you know, uh, hire for, to help us manage our infrastructure here and, uh, you know, Zoom, et cetera, that is necessary during this time. A, uh, a, a full-time member for Youth and Family Services when we, when our citizens are in a dramatically different state than they were, uh, you, you know, just a handful of months ago and may very well, uh, need, uh, those exact kind of services and the support mechanism that is needed behind those, um, you know, with an administrative assistant to help with those, uh, uh, necessary services needed and, uh, you know, police professionals in the, they're already short-staffed. So we've gone, gone way too long without being fully staffed. And, you know, so we're taking care of our infrastructure needs, our technology needs, we're, that is critical. We're taking, to be able to function, we're taking care of our individuals who have, you know, personal needs during this time. And we're taking care of our public safety needs. So, and, and if I understood correctly from Mr. Purple at our last meeting, in terms of Youth and Family Service, just that individual, uh, we're talking seven or eight dollars, uh, on average for, um, you know, the average resident. And if I understood Ms. Cook's analysis and her team's analysis, there really wasn't a great budget impact to wait till January for these, but at least this selectman thinks there's a critical need to do them now.
Good point, Dan. And again, Dan and I were the ones who voted for the earlier date for the hiring. And I think Marty and others, uh, certainly we don't have all the information we'd like to have to be able to do this. But I think that, again, if there were ever a time to reinforce these resources particularly, I think now is that time. And it seems to me it's incumbent on us to step forward and, and do the right thing here and, uh, work to make that happen down the road. If we have to adjust later, we'll have to do that. But I think it's, it's a mistake to sit back and wait until we get better information because you can wait an awful long time for that. So I think to me, taking action is important here. And, uh, these positions particularly are going to help us deal with a lot of the uncertainty and difficulties from the current pandemic. So, uh, the reason I was supportive of that and I still do.
All right. So, um, that's where our board stands on it. And I guess I'd be curious to hear what, uh, reasoning that the advisory has for wanting to proceed with July 1st start dates.
So, um, I agree with Mr. Healy. We're not asked, we're not trying to make a case for positions. They, those have been made. We're making a case on the timing of the positions. Um, I don't agree with the analysis that, uh, we need to wait to see what local aid comes in, um, if it's going to change or not. Uh, we've got so much of a cushion in local revenue, um, and always have had that any reduction in local aid should not be expected to affect, um, fiscal year 21. It would affect fiscal year 22, but we all know we've got a problem there. So we're not talking about fiscal 22 yet. So that's one response. Each position, I think you got to look at, um, separately as far as why we think it should be accelerated. So starting with IT, as I think most of you know, advisory was concerned pre-pandemic about the staffing in the IT department. We think there is a substantial risk to the town and the structure we currently have, which is one person. Um, so we actually think that we, uh, need to add more than half a person. Um, it's too late for the June meeting to do that. We've looked at other towns around us and they have many more people in that department than we do. So we think the whole department's going to be looked at, but for now, we at least think we've got to get somebody there July 1st, um, to help Tom out who has been doing yeoman's work trying to keep everybody going through this pandemic. If something were to happen to him on August 1st, what are we going to do? Um, so we think there is a crucial need to add that person as of July 1st, and I believe that, um, Tom agrees with that analysis. Uh, Youth and Family Services, they have been impacted probably more than any department as far as the pandemic they are dealing with. They always deal with hard issues. They're even harder and more numerous at this point. They have needed this person for a long time. So we think we're doing them a great disservice by not trying to, um, get that person in place by July 1st. And this is the one one though, this was not unanimous vote. This one was, um, by two. But our issue was more in hiring the person to begin with. So two people did not support adding position and then they interned and support accelerating the hiring of the position. So this one was a split vote for advisory. and then they in turn didn't support accelerating the hiring of the position. So this one was a split vote for advisory. The third one, the two policemen. It's not July 1st. It's either you're going to hire them on effective September or February when the academies start. So that, that's your choice there. We know that Chief Paulus has been already feeling that third shift with the third person with his overtime. We know that he is going to continue doing that till he gets the hires in place. We don't think it's going to save any money to, to postpone this one. In fact, it doesn't save any money because the savings from postponing this have been taken and allocated to the benefits budget. So there's no net savings to the budget. I hear you as far as the risk in hiring people now that if something were to happen and we absolutely agree there is lots of uncertainty and there's no one that can predict what's going to happen the next four years. That it would be unfortunate to have to lay people off, furlough people, et cetera, but we don't think these, these are the positions that you would go to. We think you'd keep these positions and look elsewhere. So that's kind of the counter argument to, to that piece of it. So that's kind of in a nutshell, why we voted the way we did to accelerate those. And just to kind of frame the discussion, the difference between doing everything advisory is recommending and doing everything the OS is recommending is really small. So you're talking about either a .98 year-over-year tax increase or a .82. That will probably go down even a little more on both sides if the decision is made in the fall to not purchase another R Chief vehicle. That will take it down even further. That's in there right now because that decision hasn't been made. So we're talking .82 versus .98. So we're really close anyway. So let's at least make sure we understand we've got a very immaterial difference in the two. If that affects either side.
I was one of advisory members who did not vote in favor for the Youth and Family Service position and I think that where we're, you know, I think to Kathy's point, we are close for FY22 where we're going to come in, but I think the question here is, do we think that these positions are sustainable going into FY22? And I think that's where we're having some angst over, is this a good decision to make for the town right now? I think, you know, given the, the discussions that we had this winter and leading into this budget season, I think we came to a common consensus. I think there was, you know, some people went one way and some people went another, but I think both boards were in agreement that in the majority that we should move forward with these. So does it make sense for us to at least, I mean, we're already June, these positions wouldn't get approved until June 13th anyways. Does it make sense to come between a July 1st and a January 1st? Hopefully we have some more local aid information and can go back to the governing board to say, doesn't make, are these positions sustainable for the FY21 leading into FY22, knowing what we have coming down the road? Anyone else from advisory?
So I, 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 I am not on the Brady Bunch view screen and I apologize. This is John Rooney. I'm traveling. You, you know, when we started this process, we were in a different world and, and the world that we're in now, the question is, as, as Marty said, it's not a question of need, it's a question of timing. But when you look at the timing, you also have to consider, what is the economic impact of hiring these individuals now? Rather than later. And if you do the full analysis of the advisory budget, accepting the 2% cut that the Board of Selectmen recommended, we're talking about a difference of $40 a year. That's $10 per tax bill per resident if these individuals are hired now. So yeah, there's a lot of economic uncertainty. But what I did not understand or fully appreciate was the, the condition that the Youth and the, Youth and Family Services find themselves in right now, which is significantly different than the condition they were in a couple of months ago. So that's one thing. The second thing is this IT position, as we all know, should have been funded years ago. God forbid, Tom takes a vacation or Tom wants a, a, a leave or something more sinister happens. We don't have anyone to back up the town's IT program. So I, I, I don't think waiting makes sense either from a practical perspective and certainly not from an economic perspective. I don't know if you guys could hear me. I hope you could, but I'll go on mute now.
No, thanks, John. We, we heard you loud and clear. So any other of my board members want to add anything at this point?
Yeah, I'll just add on the, on the, the economic, because I think that's gotten mischaracterized a little bit. You know, post pandemic, when we started revisiting the budget, the initial request was, was based on the premise, which quite frankly, I, I still believe in, that given where we find ourselves in now June of 2020, do we have an obligation to go to the taxpayers and say, we're not raising taxes this year? I really think we have that obligation. We're, we're a democratic board and not everybody feels that way. And when we did the numbers initially, it looked like getting a zero budget was going to have a dramatic impact on the town's services. But then the schools came in with what approaches a zero budget. And the town, again, in, in, I'm not going to describe it again, but where we find ourselves economically is coming in, and I don't know, Mark, if you know right off the top of your head, or if we have Brian on the line, I think the town's coming in at like a 7% budget increase. Is that about right?
That's right.
It's just about a 6.8. The school, uh, school's coming in under 1.
And, and again, I, I, I think that's going to be a difficult explanation at town meeting regardless. But we went through an exercise to ask for zero, that, that seemed like it was going to be too dramatic, a, an impact. Not quite so dramatic now because of what the schools did and a 2% budget. And then again, it's a democratic process. We had discussion and battles and compromises at the selectman level. And the result of that was a budget that we agreed on that, you know, added, you know, $40 to the tax rate here, $30 to the tax rate there. And one of the things that's happened is now, now we're, we're looking for another $40 to add on to the tax rate. And, and I agree with you that, that as I'm sitting here, if my taxes go up $40 or whatever the average is, not a big impact on me. That's not true for people who are unemployed. $40 makes a difference, but also from, from, I think, from a, a visual optics and quite frankly, responsibility to the community, that we got to have a damn good reason to raise a dollar of taxes. And, and an even better reason for it to be $40. Because these are extraordinary times and we have an obligation, not just to the services of the town, but to the taxpayers. And so the way we ended up where we are, which is a .8, whatever the number is, Mark, tax increase was on compromises. And quite frankly, the only compromising I'm interested in doing at this point is down, not up on the tax rate. Quite frankly, I think I've compromised enough to get to where we are. I didn't think we should add these positions at all in next year's budget. As needed as they are, because I think it's bad policy. I think it's bad optics. And it's bad for our responsibility to the taxpayers. But there are compromises on the table that got us to the .8% increase. And again, I could get outvoted 3 to 2, 4 to 1, whatever on this, but I'm not interested in compromising up, whether it's $40 or $5. I've done enough compromising on the side of services and not enough on the side of the taxpayers.
Marty? I, I hear what you're saying and I certainly appreciate that view and, and I think there are good reasons to do this. And I think if you look at the tax rate increase, we are now under 1% with either of these plans at this point, which is a pretty substantial reduction in terms of the tax rate increases that we've seen historically. So I think we have collectively worked hard to limit the impact on, on all citizens and particularly to be helpful to those who are seeing, feeling financial pressures these days. So again, to me, it's a judgment call and I respectfully disagree with what you're saying, but I understand everybody has a right to their own opinion on this.
Once again, I agree with Mrs. Stivers.
Amazing.
Brian, can I reply to Marty?
Yes, Kathy, go ahead.
So Marty, no one that's on this screen right now has been more of a fiscal hawk than I have been the last 10 years. Maybe some people equal, but I have always striven to keep the year-over-year increase down to something that looks like a normal person's paycheck increase, inflation, whatever. But I would disagree that we've got an obligation to make it exactly zero. So I mean, why not make it negative 1? So I think just kind of picking a target is a little bit arbitrary and I think that a, I mean, I don't know, this is anecdotal. I think if you ask a group of people whether they thought a .98 or .82% year-over-year increase in these times, reasonable. I think that you get at least some of those people saying, yes, I don't know what the answer would be depending on who you ask. But I just don't think, I think we have done our job with what's being proposed, both of them. I've never been part of advisory where we had a less than 1% year-over-year increase. But I do agree that the town piece of this looks horrible. It was looked horrible from before pandemic. It still looks horrible. The schools have certainly saved us here, no doubt about it. As far as what they've done, some years it's been the opposite as Mr. Shade will remember from years past. So something's got to be done about that. That can't happen again next year for sure. But I just think that we, I think we've done our job with the, with both proposals. And again, I don't want to spend hours talking about, you know, .98 or .82. Advisory has recommendation. We don't have our heels dug in on this. We tried really hard to look at it and come up with what we thought was a budget that was substantive, but absolutely reflected the times right now. So I'm with you on, we need to keep this really, really low, but I think we've done that.
No, I, to, to the credit of both, you know, our board and advisory, I completely agree with you, Kathy. I think, you know, we've both taken a, a good, hard look at this since our initial recommendations in the January, February timeframe. And it almost seems as though we're, we're almost there, not quite in 100% agreement. And, you know, maybe this is just, you know, where we're going to be going into the town meeting a week from Saturday and those in attendance will be the ones that you know, that, that will make the final decision on it. So I don't know if
Brian, if I could add one little thing?
Go ahead, Ian.
We did talk about in Capital Planning Committee, the chief's vehicle, which is still in here. We talked about pushing that off to the fall town meeting, but more, we were leaning towards pushing it out two or three years to make it on a five-year cycle. If we take that chief $60,000 vehicle out, it drops it to .85. So now we're talking you know, .85 versus .82. So you know.
Andrew would drop Boris Lightman also down to like .65. So it's going to drop them both.
The chief's vehicle?
Yeah, if you take it out, if you're going to take it out, take it out of both places. So it drops them both.
No, I'm saying in the Board of, in ours from .98, it would drop it to .85.
Agreed.
But I'm saying, you know, if we wanted to stay within that, and I think that's something that wouldn't hurt too much, that would keep us within that same dollar amount that the Board of Selectmen were comfortable with.
I'd be curious if that sways one of the three members who voted me and Mrs. Stivers last week.
It, it shouldn't because it hasn't been voted on. So we're just saying that we.
But it's a, it's a great discussion and if it were to happen, that's, I mean, that maybe gets Marty to where he wanted to be. I'll turn.
Marty, you're still at, you're still at .65. You're still above 1, or 0. If you want to get to 0, that doesn't get you there.
No, yeah, and, and no, and, and again, and Kathy, just, it's, 0 is an arbitrary. I just think it would be a, a, a compelling thing for, for, for our boards to tell the town we haven't raised taxes this year, that, 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 that we've heard what's going on in the, in the economy and understand that, that, that we don't need to show a hands. We know there are people out there who are really hurting and we're not going to cut town services. We're not going to furlough people, but we're not going to raise taxes at all this year. So it's not an arbitrary number. It's, it's to not raise taxes.
Brian, can I address that?
Marty, Marty, maybe not cutting services, but you're not providing additional services that are needed would be my response, in particular to Youth and Family. So yeah, you know what? I hear everything you're saying, absolutely. But given these times, this is one, one department I think we need to put laser focus on. And the IT is just a can that's been kicked down the road.
And I think not raising taxes by more than 1% or less is, is as compelling as not raising them at all, frankly, where you draw the line. Tim, go ahead.
Hey Marty, I just wanted to address your comment. I think that a 0% tax policy is a difficult one to embrace unless you're the kind of town that in good years does a little bit extra, saves a little bit more. And I don't think necessarily that our town has been good at that. Wasn't that long ago, for example, that the town voted to reduce its own reserves and put that money back in voters' pockets. That may in hindsight have been a bad decision. So I, I, I think that you need to have a balanced look. If, if, if you're not putting money away in good years, then you can't turn around in bad years and say, we're going to cut to 0 because there are essential services that, as John says, may be missing. When you have a police chief who says that he doesn't have enough officers to safely fill his shifts. When you have a pandemic and you only have one IT person, these are not new services. These are holes and it's been advisory's position that they should be addressed.
I hear all of that and, and I guess my response would be if those services are so critical to add new positions and raise taxes as a result in this environment, then there are other towns, God knows there are other businesses that are making very difficult personnel decisions and saying there are other positions that aren't as critical and we're not willing to do that. And I, and I get that. But, but we had, there's, there are other ways to, and, and this was part of our discussion at the Board of Selectmen with, with, maybe there were others. I know I, my position was, I can't vote to add new positions unless we find savings elsewhere. And we didn't undertake that exercise and neither has advisory. If these are so important that the town's safety is at issue, find the money somewhere else, but we haven't done that. And, and instead the default would be to raise taxes to do it and I don't want to do that.
Well, we have done it to the extent of the exercise to, you know, you asked for Brian and Mark to come back with two budgets, a year-over-year tax increase of 2 and one of 0. They came back with something a lot less than 2 by asking 21 departments to reduce, plus schools to reduce their budgets by 2% coincidentally. So by doing, doing that, because there were other things at play, it went down a lot below 2%. So you did make an effort to, to offset those by going through that exercise. It just didn't get you down all the way to 0 when you chose the, the 2% cut. If you chose, if you chose in the 01, you've been negative.
I'll just add to that, that, you know, we, we keep talking about $40 here and $40 there. And I really think $40 to some people right now that have lost their jobs is a lot of money. That may be a meal feeding somebody's family. And, you know, where people are losing their jobs, other towns again are furloughing. Framingham's got a hold on police and fire right now and they let people go, you know, Northborough furloughed the recreation. I just want to be sure that the decisions we make, that we're making for the taxpayers, and I believe everybody that is on this screen tonight has the taxpayers' best interest at heart. And I don't think. has the taxpayer's best interest at heart. And I don't think anybody's saying we don't. I just want to make sure that the positions we're adding are sustainable. It's not that there's not a need. There's, there's needs all across the town, but I want to make sure the taxpayers' needs are being addressed as well. And I think that's going down the path where Marty was going. We want to make sure we're also being fair to the taxpayers on the choices that we're making. And ultimately the taxpayers are going to decide at town meeting. But again, I just want to be fair and understand that there are people that are hurting right now here in town. Not everybody's in a great position. You know, I'm sure we've all talked to some that aren't, you know, a lot of people are struggling to know how they're going to stay in town. You know, because their jobs have been furloughed and lost. So anything we can do, even if it's only $40, until we have a better idea that we may not be coming back in the fall and letting people go or asking for more. I mean, for me, I have a better idea come the fall or even January 1 of the sustainability and where the town stands financially moving forward to be able to keep those positions.
Now, my, one of the challenges I have, Lisa, is that I don't really know that, you know, no position is, you can say is sustainable forever. And we don't know what's coming down the road. Your point is incredibly well taken. My perspective is these positions are needed now. So there may be a point where next year, a position, and if it's not a, a police professional or, you know, a youth and family person, but maybe there's a different position that is less critical than those, that if we had to let someone go, yeah, we'll make that decision at the time. I'm talking about only what I feel are critical hires for our residents right now. And we did, I think we've done a wonderful job in getting the budget down to a point where, and we're now, we're even talking about, you know, police chief vehicles and, and, you know, we have done everything to get this down to a point where it's less than 1% from a, you know, a, a, a Southborough perspective. That is unbelievable. And if we can do that, but meet the critical needs of our citizens right now, both in their personal safety and their, and our overall community, community safety, I think we've done a wonderful thing. I am confident that, you know, the, the town of, the annual town meeting participants will overwhelmingly say and approve a budget like we're talking about under 1% with these hires in there, noting that they are critical to needs of those very taxpayers that you're talking about right now. So that's my thought. And, you know, I know that people have lost their jobs or taken reductions and, and no stimulus check, no, you know, unemployment is going to, is going to cover all of that. It makes an impact. So, you know, hopefully it, it reduces the overall economic impact to those residents, but you know, those things are also there to help the residents. And there's a lot of that going on in our country right now, which is wonderful. I just think for where we've gotten, incredibly low budget and only hiring those critical assets needed to help us all do our jobs and then to keep our community safe.
So.
Go ahead, John. Go, John.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we are so close that if we don't reach consensus tonight, we continue to work on it because I think the last thing that this town or any of us need is to go to town meeting and argue about this type of a difference on a budget. So again, if we don't come to agreement tonight, I, I still think we can get there. We've got plenty of time to get there. But I thought it was important at least to hear our views.
How about, how about this is one more way to look at this, Marty. You're not, we're not talking zero. We're talking either 0.98 or 0.82. So I don't know how many people really see that as a significant difference. I don't think they would. They're both below one. They're both high and toward one. But what you get out of that difference as far as the higher one, I think is a lot. So I am spending a whole lot of time with Youth and Family Services because I work on their 501(c)(3). They are getting lots and lots of requests for financial help from the 501(c)(3) that supports the town. The town doesn't supply the funds, but the 501(c)(3) does. So they're spending a lot of extra time on people who are what you described that really can't afford that $40. These people can't afford their rent. So there's a lot of effort being made at night. These people that are employees are spending much more time than what they normally do on these kind of requests. So it's not, we're not debating 0.98 versus zero. We're debating 0.98 versus 0.82. And what you get out of that difference, I think, is critical. Again, I say, what are you going to do when Tom Laflamme gets sick in October with no one there to back him up at all? So I just don't see how we do that. We've looked at the towns around us. No one has one person in the IT department but us. So, you know, we wanted one person and so we're willing to deliver with a half person for now, but we just don't, we just can't comfortably see how we do that January 1st, given that we're going to rely on time again for six, four months. So again, what does he do when he wants to take a vacation? He's been working crazy hours since the start.
I would like nothing more than to find some common ground, Kathy. And, and I agree with John, going into town meeting would be more than beneficial without having to explain to, you know, town meeting voters as we're trying to get through town meeting as quickly as we can, as people are sitting outside. So, I mean, I'm committed to, to continuing a conversation, certainly. But, but again, a 7-1 versus a 1-1, unless we find some common ground in the middle, I'm, I'm stuck on 1-1.
All right. So, you know, so we've been at this, it's been a very, very good discussion for half an hour or more. Again, as I'm seeing it, I'm seeing the three key people is Mr. Healy, Ms. Brashille and myself. And I'm not sensing a change, at least on the boards, on our board's part from that perspective. I'll go, if, if I'm incorrect, I'm sure I'll be corrected, but you know, I think, I do think it's worthwhile to continue having discussions and, you know, perhaps we ought to target time next week to, to try and meet again, because I agree with several statements that have been made. It really would be beneficial to have selectmen and advisory on the same page going into this. We're very, very close. Hopefully we can get there. I think that that will go a long way to expediting town meeting itself. So Kathy.
And we, we agree, we agree that we want to come to a consensus. And of course, the tables have been turned this year. Normally it's the other way around. Advisory is lower than BOS. And this is an unusual position for advisory to be in.
So if we were to meet halfway on, on a start date and go with a 9-1, 10-1 and give ourselves two months to kind of hash these things out and, and come up with a, a plan in the short term and long-term sustainability of these, would that be more palatable for your board?
Aren't we already at 9-1 for the police officers, though?
Right.
And that one doesn't affect the budget anyway, Sam, because they took the savings and put in benefits. So just folk, I think if you're starting that budget, focus on the IT and Youth and Family Services. That alone is about 40,000 bucks. So that's about 40% of 25. So it's about 12 basis points as far as the difference. So that's most of the difference between the two budgets, those two.
Kathy, what would the impact be if we split the police? We did one in February, September, when the, in one in February.
The police have no impact on the budget, Andrew. He's taken the savings and put those in benefits. So as long as he wants to keep, as long as Brian continues to want to do that, then the police start date doesn't affect the budget.
Because he's padding it.
He's keeping the savings. So the savings are going to benefits. Now, let me just say this, I think we're about to jump to the 2% cut piece of it. But Jim Hagerty in the 2% piece, cut his admin person from a benefited position to a non-benefit. He went from like 22 hours to 19. The savings from that, the actual benefits, Ryan hasn't picked up yet. So he can pick that up and that will help his cushion that he wants to put into his benefits. So that will help him a little bit as far as the reduce the cushion. If we were to postpone one policeman to the February academy and then keep one in September. So I agree, Brian. I think we've talked about this enough. So if you want to go on to the 2% differences.
Yep.
I'd just like to add before we close. I mean, I would be open to exploring possibilities to come together. So I, I'm going to leave it at that. And whether it, maybe it's something as Chelsea suggested, changing some of the dates. I, I would be obviously open to trying to find a way that we can go to town meeting together.
And the other thing we haven't talked about doing, because we usually don't fool with this, we're talking about a projected year-over-year tax increase until policy belly sets a tax rate. We really don't know for sure what it is. Last year it ended up being about 15 basis points more than what we projected by the time they were done, because things move around, they don't have anything to do with the budget. So for example, the local revenue is extremely conservative every year on purpose. It's what generates our free cash. If we were to raise that by $100,000 to solve the problem, we'd be, we'd be down to zero or close to it. So you could always do that. I don't know if anybody's going to appetite to do that, but we could also look at that and decide whether we can raise the local revenue and it still be a really low number and still be comfortable that even with a pandemic impact, we're okay. So Brian, you want to go ahead and go on to the 2% ones?
Yep. Go ahead, Kathy.
So you may recall that you saw a spreadsheet that Brian and Mark put together that showed 21 departments beside schools that were asked to reduce their budget by 2%, including your budget. So you guys did the same thing. You actually reduced yours much more than 2%. So advisory looked at each one of them and rather than focusing on doing something that is across the board, we talked to each department and asked them to, instead of just saying 2%, tell us what you really need to cut, what you should cut out of there because of the pandemic. What you won't spend. You're not going to go to a conference. You don't have travel, whatever. So that's what we did. And of the 21 budgets, there are six that we don't agree with the cuts that were made using 2%. Only six out of 21. Those are conservation, rec, planning board, treasurer, family use services and fire. The total difference is a whopping $25,000. So it really is small as far as the impact on that budget. But we had substantive reasons to not agree with the 2% cut. So Brian, I don't know if you want to do them one by one, or if you just want to do it a different way, but there's six that we have a difference as far as not wanting to cut as much as the 2% did cut.
So. So, so. Kind of, what do we want to do here? I mean, we still have respectfully, I don't want to go on all night as well. We still have a decent amount of stuff to cover on our agenda. Should we maybe have that? I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me. Should we maybe recirculate that spreadsheet targeted night next week, but we can have a specific meeting dedicated to budget discussions again to see if we can come to consensus ahead of town meeting. I know that leaves staff shorthanded in being able to have handouts ready and all that as well. How do, how do we want to do it? Just want to plug through it tonight and do it? What if, what's, what if folks want to do?
I, I guess my reaction is that, that I would just go with the selectmen's budget and, and, and implore you to consider doing that. $25,000 over six departments. I, I, that you can't make the same argument that, that's being made for the police and youth and family services for $25,000. And the idea that the only money that we're cutting out of the town budget is money that wasn't going to be spent, spent anyway, which essentially is what it sounds like. In other words, tell us what money you weren't going to spend anyway, and we'll take that out of the budget. But this, but $25,000, we, the idea that, that over six departments, we can't live with that? I, I, I don't think we should spend any time on that at all. I just think we should, would live with the Board of Selectmen's number.
Can I give you one example of why we think you ought to look at this before you say, say that? Do you realize that Brian Valentine's budget was cut in part because he's going to issue three tax bills instead of four? So when people get their January bill, it's, it's going to have on it the coupon for February 1st and May 1st. He doesn't want to do it. We know it's going to be a mess. People are going to lose it. They're going to pay their tax bills late. He's going to have to deal with all these people mad because they didn't get the bill like they're used to. And so he's going to have a lot of walk-ins. There's going to be interest charges that people are wanting, all for $800. So that's the kind of thing we think we looked at as far as, because he had to make, he made arbitrary cuts. That one to me is the glaring one. It's only $800, but that's the kind of thing we did, Marty, to, to do this. And to show you again how trivial this is, the 25, 15 is fire. The other five departments are $10,000. So it isn't worth spending a whole lot of time on this, but there were substantive reasons that we made that we proposed a different number.
And Marty, I agree, $25,000 is not a huge amount of money. On the other hand, I've followed the advisory discussions on these things. I think there are good, good reasons for supporting the advisory view on these things. I think you need to do things that make sense. Even with the pandemic and the financial pressures, we don't want to do things that are silly in terms of having people doing things they shouldn't be doing, like this tax bill thing would create, I'm convinced, massive disruption in terms of people's confusion and so forth. That to me is something that just doesn't make any sense. So I, I support advisory's view on this.
So let me give you a second example and I'll be, I'll be quiet. The rec department, they did their cut, the only way they could, because there's only two salaries on there. They reduced each person's hours. So each person has agreed to reduce the amount of hours that they say they'll work. My guess is they'll work it anyway. Because that's all they could do and no one else had to do that. So we think that that is really unfair to that department.
Can I add, Brian? I'd be interested in seeing what advisory came up with. It's not something that we, we have in front of us today. I know I, I've listened to some of the discussions, but if we could get an analysis, Kathy, I can't imagine if we're talking, what, six budgets, you said? If we can get an analysis of what your reasoning and what you're looking for on this, I mean, if we're going to have another meeting to discuss potential start dates, I think, again, it would be good to have something in advance that we could see so we can actively have a discussion. It's tough without having it in front of us right now to see where you made the changes and, you know, what, what you're looking at. So if, for me, that would be very helpful to, to frame a discussion.
Kathy, maybe we could just designate a couple of people to sit down with a couple of the selectmen to give them an overview before the next meeting to make it a lot shorter.
That would be fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
And remember too, this is why we just, there's no reason to get excited about this at all, is that we've got a special town meeting coming where additional changes either way could be made. So it's not like this is necessarily totally locked in, no matter what we do.
One last thing I'll say is any citizen that's watching this discussion tonight has got to have some level of confidence that we are having these discussions over 0.12. That, you know, all of us have enough interest and care in what's best for the town and the taxpayers that we're even having this discussion. So I, I think the taxpayer is well served by it.
0.12%, which is 0.0012.
But again, it's a great discussion and taxpayers are served by it.
So can we pick a night next week? If it works for people, while everybody's here. Yep. Can we do Monday next week? I'm just trying to get, do it as early as possible, just to give folks the remainder of the week to get ready for town meeting, which will be on the Saturday.
Can anyone from advisory not do Monday? I see no one saying no. So it's like we can do it.
All right.
Monday's good, Brian.
Monday, 6 o'clock? That time okay?
Works for me. Good here.
Okay.
And, and Brian.
This is Tom Laflambeau. Monday, the 8th is currently booked with planning and recreation. So if one of those were willing to move, then we could do another meeting, but.
How about Tuesday?
So Tom, what time did planning and recreation have?
They have, it looks like 7:00 and 7:30.
7:00 and 7:30. How about if we? Tell me if it's not feasible, Tom. Could we go earlier and commit to an end time at? No, at 6:30?
Up to the feasibility of your discussion.
So. Can we commit to 5:30 to, to 6:30?
We do 5:30 to 7:30, right? And still fit with the recreations.
Who's got the public room of the two?
That is planning board and they start at 7:00 and that's starting the meeting. So.
So 5:40 or 7?
Yeah. All right. Uh, how about Tuesday, Tom?
Tuesday is, I believe, wide open right now.
So what do we, do we want to try and squeeze it in early Monday or Tuesday? What do folks want to do?
Monday works better for me. I can do Tuesday if need be, but Monday's certainly a preference if we could do it earlier. If not, I can make anything work.
Monday would be great.
Either works for me.
Either's fine. I spend a lot of time in a home office these days.
Yeah. Why don't we target five-thirty on Monday?
Good here.
And we will get you the details of the six proposed reductions.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene Monday.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing with our agenda, I'm going to skip over reports for right now and go to consent agenda. Any items under consent agenda that folks would like to hold? I'll hold C. Hearing nothing else, uh, I will move that we approve item A, approve the open session minutes for the two dates listed. Uh, B, reappointments of board committee volunteers.
Brian, can, can we hold B? I just have a question on B.
Yep. All right. So we'll, I'll move items A, D, E, F, G, and H.
Second.
Move seconded, any discussion? Uh, votes, Brascio?
Hi.
Uh, Healy?
Aye.
Kalenda?
Aye.
Stivers?
Stivers, aye.
Shay is aye. Uh, item B, Ms. Brascio.
Just a question and, and I apologize if we didn't address this before. Under conservation commission, there was a reappointment conditional. Did we, if we approve this as a consent agenda, are we approving that conditional appointment as well?
I have not heard any. I have not heard our board take any action to agree to the conditions.
Agreed.
So I would, I would certainly move to, to reappoint that individual, period.
Okay, fair enough. That was my question. Thank you.
And I think what we said, Brian, is if, if he wants it conditioned, which our reappointment is not, then he can choose not to be sworn in.
And, and we encouraged him and I'll encourage Carl again to reach out to me or anyone else and, and happy to talk about why A, we don't think the condition is appropriate and B, we think that, that what he wants to accomplish is better done with him on conservation, not off conservation.
And I totally agree Marty.
I do too.
Carl's a great guy and a great asset to the town. I think he's a wonderful volunteer and I hope he continues.
Agreed. Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Uh, all right. So I'll move item B to reappoint board committee volunteers as listed in the warrant, uh, and the, huh, the warrant and the agenda. Move seconded, uh, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Item C, consider dissolution or new charge for committees. And just to move this along, I'll make a motion to dissolve the Main Street Working Group, Public Safety Building Committee, Town Property Review Committee, Pilot Committee, and to, that our board work on a new charge for the golf course committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Uh, particularly for item one on that list.
Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay's aye as well. Update on impact of COVID-nineteen. Mark, any updates?
Uh, just a, just a quick update. We continue to, um, work to bring sta, uh, bringing staff, um, back into the buildings this coming Monday. Um, I've been working with, um, Mrs. Hale, who has just popped up. And, um, and with the public health nurse Emily Amico and Chief Achilles, as well as Leslie Chamberlain. Just to make sure that we're going to get this right, um, there's certain things that we have to do with regard to uh, state requirements in terms of a, 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 a training session with the employees on social distancing and you know, certain protocols and things that we need to understand. I know John Parent's been working hard on making some improvements to our buildings. Um, and so we're working now with bringing people back in, in an approach that makes sense to the, um, to the departments in terms of the staffing, whether it's going to be staggered. You know, whether certain people are, are sitting too close, whether we have to do certain things, um, to move some people around. So I, I give, I give a lot of credit, um, uh, to, to Mrs. Hale and to, um, uh, to Emily Amico to try and, and help to put this together. And if we can pull this all off by Friday and start to see people live and in person on Monday, um, I think it'll be a great thing. It was a lot more difficult, even though I didn't agree at the time, to put people remote. I mean, to bring people back than it was to actually make our operations remote. So, um, that's, that's really where we are right now. I do want to point out, because I know you guys check the website and the COVID page all the time. If you do note that, um, we have now been a week, um, a little over a week and knock on wood, have not had an increase in our thirty-nine positive cases. However, you'll also notice that zero of those cases remain in isolation. So all the positives have been released from isolation now and are considered recovered. And so, um, you know, that is good news. I saw Mr. Kalenda just light up again. I'm sure he's going to want to revisit a couple of issues that he talked about tonight based on the numbers, but.
I'm sure you got that from the Board of Health, which is.
So like I said, it, it, you know, we, we are trending in the right direction, you know, the numbers and, and the dates that we've used. You can ask Mrs. Hale, you know, I started talking about trying to bring people back into the buildings right after Memorial Day, and that just wasn't going to work. Um, so, you know, we're trying to take, you know, a reasonable approach to this and, you know, um, you know, would like to then focus, once we get people back in, focus on getting the public, you know, back into the buildings, you know, in a, in a, um, you know, kind of a systemic, you know, a systemic way over the following couple of weeks after that. So that's really all I have unless Vanessa, I've missed something.
No, I just wanted to add, I don't think we discussed this in any of our prior updates, but I wanted to thank our friends and partners at Fay School. They have given us a substantial donation of masks and gloves, um, close to a thousand items that have been shared with our public safety departments are, I have a stock for our townhouse employees when they come back. You know, library employees, senior center, as well as, um, colonial gardens as well. So I wanted to put a public thank you out to them certainly. In addition to that, uh, we chatted, mentioned, uh, Leslie Chamberlain earlier. She's been, of course, a tremendous resource for us. But I just wanted to note that Leslie's gone into semi-retirement, which is why we hired, um, Emily Amico to be our new Board of Health, Public Health Nurse. But, um, you know, in the very, at the onset of this, um, Leslie was working nearly twenty-four hours a day. So, um, we wanted to congratulate her on her semi-retirement, but also uh, make sure the board and the public knew that she was still certainly on board, um, but now enjoying semi-retirement and thank her for her, you know, dutiful work at the beginning of this crisis.
Thank you. Next item of the matters properly before the board, Attorney Davis has requested that I read into the record a letter that he sent May twenty-ninth, addressed to Mark Purple, Town Administrator, regarding Louise Barron at all versus Daniel Al Kalenda at all, U.S. District Court, CA number four twenty dash C V four zero zero five six dash T S H. Dear Mr. Purple, this is to confirm that the town of Southborough's liability insurer, M I I A Property and Casualty Group, Inc., has retained this firm to represent the town and the Southborough Board of Selectmen individually and in their capacity as members of the board in the above captioned civil action originally filed in Worcester Superior Court. On May twenty-one, two thousand twenty, we removed the case to the United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts, sitting in Worcester pursuant to twenty-eight USC Section one four four one A. As grounds for the removal, we cited count two of the complaint wherein one of the plaintiffs seeks recovery under forty-two USC Section one nine eight-two for alleged civil rights violations. This federal cause of action gives the United States District Court subject matter jurisdiction under twenty-eight USC Section one three-three-one. On May twenty-eight, two thousand twenty, we filed an answer and jury demand in the District Court on behalf of all defendants, a copy of which was recently forwarded to you. I look forward to working with you, the board and the town in the defense of this action. Signed, John Davis. Also, Mr. Davis requested that I state that on the advice of counsel, the board will not entertain any questions or engage in any further discussion regarding the federal lawsuit at this time. Next item on the agenda is correspondence from Town Council regarding the open meeting law complaint filed by Ginny Kramer dated five thirteen, twenty twenty. Sorry. And with respect to that, we received correspondence from Mr. Cipriano. On May thirteenth, two thousand twenty, Attorney Kramer filed an open meeting law complaint with the Board of Selectmen setting forth circumstances which allegedly constitute a violation of the open meeting law as it relates to notice of the executive session to discuss pending litigation. The text of the alleged violation was as to the omission of the name of the particular, particular litigation and the perceived right of the public to know who is suing their town government. Uh, the recommendation from Town Council in response to this is that the board consider amending their agenda item to specify the name of the case. The second request for relief has already been addressed as the executive session minutes identify the Barron's and Saint Andre's lawsuit and persons present in the session. So with that, I will make a motion, uh, that this board file an amended or revised agenda with the town clerk's office for that executive session meeting with revision to the agenda to include the specific name of the case with wording as recommended by council.
Second.
Move seconded, any discussion?
I'm not sure if it's discussion, but I, but I will just state that, that two things. Number one, in my view, um, this isn't necessary. Um, and that we were in compliance with the open meeting law. But number two, it drives a nail in the coffin and puts the issue to rest. And so I'm very much in favor of it.
I agree with that completely.
Well said Marty.
Any other discussion? Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shay is aye. As well. Thank you. And lastly, I want to go back to reports. So, um, for my report, I just wanted to note that this evening marks the final time that the board as currently constituted will meet at a regular meeting. Obviously, we've set up a meeting for next Monday already, but as a regular meeting, this is our final meeting as we are currently constituted. The next regular meeting is June twenty-third, which is after the upcoming town election. I'd like to thank the board for its support of me and my role as chair in this past year, and I appreciate the confidence that you showed in selecting me as chair and hope that I've represented the board in a positive manner over the past twelve months. The next time that this board meets, there will be at least one new member. And at our next meeting, I intend to have an agenda item for reorganization of the board. I think it's important for a new person to have the opportunity to serve in this role. So it takes some time over the next few weeks, uh, to think of who you would think is best to serve as chair for the upcoming year. As Ms. Brascio and Mr. Kalenda finish their current three-year terms, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of them for their dedication to the position, for their commitment to the community and serving on this board. Each has served this town well and the town is a better place for their service. To each of you, I say, take pride in the accomplishments this board has made in your time as a selectman. Past few years are historic times with what we as a town have undertaken. Your leadership has played a key role in making sure that they did happen. One of you is running for reelection and for the other, this marks the final regular meeting as a selectman. So Ms. Brascio first, I wish you and all those running for the two seats well. This will be a challenging election, given the times we're living in, and I wish each of you the best in getting your message out to the voters. To Mr. Kalenda, congratulations to you for nine years serving on this board. You're the last of the remaining selectmen who were on the board when I first joined, and I can say with all honesty, it's been an honor and a privilege to have served with you. I know we've not agreed on all issues that have come before us and nor should we have. It's okay to have differences. But in each instance, I knew that there was mutual respect for our differing opinions. When we differed, I knew that I better have my thoughts and arguments fully thought out and prepared because I knew that you would eloquently, eloquently state your side. And in those instances where we were on the same side of an issue, it was satisfying to me to know that you finally were seeing things the right way. So our town's fortunate to have your service on the Northborough-Southborough Regional Committee for the next two years, and I wish you well. Again, it's been great being on this board with you and Dan be very proud of your accomplishments. Thanks again to all of you for what I can confidently state was a very successful year. We as a board saw the opening of the public safety building. We've served this community and our police and fire departments for decades. We saw completion and of the reconstruction of the golf course. We paid tribute to a great town resident and friend, naming our golf course access road after John Wilson. Look forward to the completion of the Main Street project later this year and hopefully being able to attend meetings at the townhouse again, where we can all meet again in person. So thank you all. And any other member reports?
So Brian, I'll, uh, start if I may.
Go ahead Dan.
So, so a couple of things. So, um, first of all, and, and foremost, we had a wonderful Memorial Day observance this past Memorial Day, even though it's widely, uh, uh, different than what we've ever had to do before. No big crowds, no fire trucks, no police, uh, you know, uh, um, no, well, I mean, they were there to support us, but you know, we didn't have the normal parade and the bands and, uh, the students and the scouts and, and, but, you know, we did the right thing and, and had a, uh, Memorial Day observances that were respectful, uh, that honored our war dead and, uh, were videotaped by Terry and Southborough Access Media. So fortunate that, uh, she continues to take the time from her days to do things like that so that our residents, our family members who are out of state, um, can see those observances. You know, particularly thankful that Lisa, yeah, you know, spoke once again, as she's done at many of our observances, whether it's Veterans Day or Memorial Day, she's always there. Uh, and, and many of our selectmen are, uh, but Lisa is always there and, you know, and, and so thank you Lisa and, and not only obviously for that, but for all of the care drives that you've done for the troops. You know, when I was in Iraq, I received those boxes from you. My kids were there. And, you know, family was there helping, you know, you guys put that together. You know, so, well done. I'll just say, as my time, you know, comes to an end, I decided not to run for reelection. I thought nine years is a long time and, you know, my, you know, my. And, you know, my, you know, my wife, my kids would say to me, uh, after some of these meetings coming home, they'd say. Why do you want to do that? You know, for hours, at least every other Tuesday, why do you want to be there instead of here with us? And, you know, there's a lot to be said for that. I love public service. I've done it in the Army now for uh over twenty years. And I'm continuing that. I'm continuing on the regional school committee, but I thought, you know what? Nine years is enough. And it's also time for other voices to to put their names on a ballot and and to run. And so. You know, I was I was actually glad to do that, glad to see. Others put their names on a ballot and have a contested election. Serving the town of Southboro has been one of the proudest things I've ever done. Um, I've served with some wonderful people, obviously, you know, i- i- when you you. When you serve in public, you take the good with the bad, and you're not going to please everyone and um, you know, so. I've always done my best to serve my community in the best way that I thought and um. And and I've loved it from serving with early on with uh, you know, Mr. Mr. Boland and Mr. Rooney, uh, wonderful public servants and residents. Um, you know, Mr. Semino, Mrs. Faniff, you know, uh, Brian Schifrin, go down the line of just wonderful people who have chosen to serve. All of whom I have think made me better, a better selectman. Mr. Stivers, I think, is I hope has made me a better selectman. We don't always see eye to eye, and that's actually awesome. That is a great thing. You make me think, Sam. He, you know, you'd come even more prepared than maybe I otherwise would, and you know what? And then sometimes you say stuff and like, yes, that guy's right on. Um, you know, and other times we disagree, but we do it, you know, um, of course, civilly and and collegially and. Um, you know, you've made me a better selectman, and I thank you. So all my members, Mr. Shay, you know, Lisa, Mr. Healy. Absolutely, you know, uh, Mr. Purple, who I was glad to see come on board years ago and and be a part of that. Um, you know, Vanessa, uh, Tom, what a wonderful team that we have here in the town of Southboro. Uh, and, you know, the reason why I actually chose to do this last time. I was last time was going to be one more time and uh. And I did it because I wanted to see our public safety facility come to fruition. I was thrilled to be there for that and to see our Main Street project. Um, you know, uh, also come to completion. So I feel like I've 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 accomplished a lot and and. And it was only through the great teamwork of a of a wonderful. Um, you know, team of professionals that I'm in front of here as well as, you know, and you know, the great. Uh, residents of Southboro who come out at annual town meeting and and at elections and. Uh, you know, we're we're we live in a fortunate. Community, and I will never forget the time that I've been on this board and, you know, thank you, Brian, for your leadership and for giving me the opportunity to. To uh, to say a few words tonight.
Good. Thank you, Dan. Other members? Lisa, go ahead.
Um, Dan, I would just like to thank you for your service to the town, for your service to our military. I have learned a lot from you in the three years that we've served together. Um, again, we may not always agree, but I have always enjoyed the respect that we have shared for each other's opinions, and I think that is the biggest. The biggest benefit that we could have given the taxpayers of this town and um. The town was very well served by you during your nine years, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for for your service to both the town and to the military.
Thank you, Lisa.
And also I'd echo that. Thanks for your service. Uh, I'm disappointed that I can't look forward to another agreement once every year or so with. I'll remain optimistic. Thank you.
Thanks.
And 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 I'll I'll I I will echo um pretty much everything that anyone said. Um, Dan, it's been a privilege and a pleasure. Um, uh, your arguments were always impassioned. Um, um, and particularly persuasive when they coincided with mine. But uh, uh, enjoy spending more time with your family. I know it's a big deal for you.
I will. Thank you, Marty.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Purple, Town Administrator Report?
Uh, so I'm not going to get in the way of anything that anyone has said tonight. I do want to point out, though, um, that uh, Mr. Kalenda is the uh, after seven and a half years, is the last member. Of the board um who appointed me. Uh, and so now this is, uh, you know, new and uncharted waters, I guess. Um, but uh, but I do appreciate, uh, I do appreciate him being part of that board that brought me here. Um, it's it's been a great number of years, and I've enjoyed it immensely, even in these difficult times. Um, it's uh, it's it's something, so I don't have anything else to add, you know, I'll. I'm sure have more to say um after we finally get a budget set and how we're going to put this all together in a week and a half um for for town meeting, so um. That that stands in front of us.
Thank you, Marty.
I don't know. All of a sudden, I find myself the senior member of the board, and I don't know how that happened. I still feel like I'm new to this thing, but uh. Uh, all right, lastly, public comment. Uh, I know a few folks have indicated a desire to speak. I'm first going to go to uh David Falco. David, I just gave you uh, just moved you up. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And for the record, if you could just state your name and address, please, and your.
Yes.
Thank you.
My my name's David Fialco. I'm at Ten Lyman Street here in Southboro. I'm the Vice President of Southboro Little League. Um, I wanted to speak real briefly uh about the reopening of fields for organized youth sports. I know that discussion. Came up earlier today. I'll be fairly brief. Uh, also, I want to thank uh Mr. Kalenda for for his comments and other members of this board for their comments and also the work of. Of Tim Davis. I know this is something that nobody's dealt with before, and we're all trying to do the the best that we can uh with what we know. Um, there was mentioned earlier of the the state's plan on reopening, and as that relates to organized youth sports. Um, there's phase two, which calls for uh limited practices with certain guidelines. That's part of phase two, which is anticipated but not guaranteed to be. June eighth and then phase three, which calls for youth games um. With limitations and guidelines again and projected if you go by the three weeks to to the end of June. Um, again, no guarantees there. Um, the the Little League's concern came up when we saw the the recreation's announcement. Of the August first date for organized sports that was referenced earlier because obviously that date. Is is much further out than than the state's plan, and so we're really looking forward to hear where those discussions. Go with the uh Fire Chief and the Board of Health and whoever else uh is coming up with that information. Um, we would like to get um the fields open for Southboro youth to play baseball. And I wanted to share a few things that we've done and and we we know about uh youth baseball in the area. First, um, our we're part of District Five, which is roughly twenty towns. Uh, Southboro is the probably the furthest east town, and if you go west, you've got. Northboro, Westboro, Shrewsbury, and and a host of of other towns, but what we learned at a meeting last week. Was that each of these towns um other than Southboro and perhaps one other, which was fifty fifty. Um, are all planning to follow the state's recommendations. They're planning on uh limited practices, and we hit phase two on June eighth with guidelines. And then the resumption of games in phase three at the end of June or beginning of July. And and so we were an outlier when we reported that we may not be able to do that if our August first date wasn't moved up. Um, the other thing that we've done is we sent out a survey to uh the folks that were registered for baseball. In the spring to get the feel from parents about how they feel about their kids playing baseball under the conditions and with some of the safety guidelines that have been recommended. By Little League International, and the we've gotten, we sent the survey out yesterday, and we've already received fifty responses. The overwhelming majority of those are all. Very favorable. Yes, we want our children to play um baseball. There were only a couple of responses. That were no, and those weren't for safety reasons, but rather because people were going away for the summer and just weren't going to be here. So. Uh, there's support from the parents of the baseball players as well. Um, obviously, the data that's coming out of Southboro, which you referred to a little while ago, is very favorable in that, uh, you know, and I think that's attributable to. Uh, the work of the Board of Health, this board and others, but, you know, only thirty-nine cases in town and and none of those still in in quarantine, which indicates. That Southboro is is perhaps better off than a lot of the communities that are scheduled ahead of us. Um, baseball is also a sport that is very naturally more distanced than other sports. Uh, there's very minimal physical interaction. Players on a field are are naturally. Spread out. There's only one batter up at a time. The bases are separated, and of course, there's some physical physical interaction, but not not the same as as other sports. And at the end of the day, too, um, not lost on us, and and I'm sure nobody else here is. Kids in 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 the state and this country have had their world shaken up. They've lost, you know, lost the ability to go to school, to socialize with friends, to play athletics. And by getting our fields open for organized play, we're giving them that opportunity to go out and and be athletic. Um, you know, socialize with their friends, interact and do all those things. So we are just, you know, we we're available to meet. With whoever we need to, whether that's a Fire Chief or a Board of Health or whoever the case may be. Um, share with them the Little League International's plans that are already in place and jurisdictions that have started baseball. The safety precautions that we're going to put in place um for our team uh for our leagues, and and I should also mention, too, that what we're really looking at is. The older of the Little League, so your your triple A and majors age kids and and not so much T-ball, which. Or, you know, single A or younger kids that that maybe wouldn't be as good at following uh rules or directions. So. That was it. I I really appreciate the time to to fill you in on that and the opportunity to speak, so thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your patience and waiting. Um, Ms. Lavalt? Uh, let's see if I did this right. Kristen, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yep, go ahead. It's a little bit scratched, but go ahead.
All right, sorry, I'll try. So first, my apologies. That was not my daughter Kaylin writing chats and and questions. I'm logged in apparently as her due to homeschooling. So thank you, Kate, for letting me know that, and those were actually coming from me. I have a couple really quick things. Um, first of all, I just want to extend my thank you, my family's thank you. To Mrs. Brascio and Mr. Kalenda as well, not only for your service on the Board of Selectmen, but clearly what you've offered the community and the country. And, you know, you have our complete respect for everything you've done and and continue to do, so thank you. Um, my second question wasn't actually what I was was originally chiming in on, but having now stopped for the meeting and clearly you see me trying to chat during it, I'm sure that was annoying. Is there not going to be the opportunity after each agenda item to pause and open it up to public questions or comments on that particular agenda agenda item? For example, I have a question on town meeting, but I'm not sure that Mr. Semino is still on the line.
So Mr. Semino is still on the line, so why don't you go ahead and ask it and I'll uh. See if.
Okay. So this has not been discussed within the recreation, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't announce myself. It's Kristen Lavalt, twelve Southwood Drive. I'm also a member of the Recreation Commission. Um. I'm not speaking on behalf of them right now. Um, with the town meeting, you know, part of the incentive to moving it to a Saturday was to enable more parents to show up, meaning both parents, not just um one parent. You know, losing effectively, losing a vote in a household. In past years, recreation has organized groups of teenagers to help um watch children for those who want to attend. And with our first Saturday meeting, we had intended to really make it. Kind of a town event and and something that people wanted to attend and make it fun for the kids. Now that we're outside, that seems like that could still be an opportunity. Um, albeit, again, we have not discussed it as a committee, but as a commission, excuse me, but we do meet on, I think it's Monday or Tuesday. We were just talking Monday. Um, has that been discussed in any of your meetings? Um, any initial comments on whether or not you think that is feasible?
Uh, so, so I think we did touch upon that when we had Paul on earlier. Um, I'm not sure who typically, so, well. I got, I I don't know the right answer to it particularly.
Brian?
Go ahead.
You unmuted me a couple of minutes ago. I'm not sure you meant to, but you did. Uh, and I've been very quiet. Uh, so ju- just to answer the question, I mean, he- here's the very short answer. Um. As moderator, and I know as uh the town clerk who sets up the physical uh uh construct of our meeting. I could tell you that we are both not in favor of what you're suggesting, quite simply keeping kids socially distanced in a setting like that. Uh, is something that we just don't, um, we're not ready to attempt for this in the conditions that we're under this year. Um, I I I I um. I encourage you to reach out to the Board of Health. Uh, to to suggest, to to air your idea. Um, certainly, if there's some way to organize childcare for parents. You know, unofficially, separate from town meeting, and 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 rec is willing to do something like that and work through the Board of Health, I encourage you to try. Uh, I wonder how many parents would want their kids to do that, to be honest with you. So um, in terms of an official. Provision of childcare at town meeting, we won't have that this year, unfortunately, and I do regret it, but I don't really see any other way.
Okay, so again, my plan is to add it as an agenda item to our Monday meeting to see if there aren't some ideas that we can. Because I I think you may be surprised on the number of people who do want to attend town meeting. Um, so it's just something we want to think about. We may arrive at the same conclusion, obviously, based on, you you heard Tim talking about camps. Um, but I think it's something that we just as a commission haven't discussed, so we'll add to the agenda on Monday. Um, it might be something that we can reach out to the public and and get some feedback and, you know, survey or what have you to see if if there's actually interest there or not. Um, my last point, I just wanted to make a comment on the earlier discussion, and and I don't know if I can ask a question of the Board of Selectmen at this time, so tell me if I can't. But in regards to the discussion about the potential delay of the IT and and um family services, youth and family services hires. Personally, and I'm speaking just as a citizen right now, I am very strongly in favor of bringing them on ASAP. I work in IT. Um, I understand the risks that we are all very concerned about what would happen to our organization. If we were to lose even simple things like Zoom, Webex, all of the technology that we depend on. So my question to the Board of Selectmen is, are you accepting that risk, or do you have an alternative risk mitigation strategy if we don't have a backup for Tom?
What's the protocol, Brian? Do we, do you want us to engage in discussion or?
You know, it's typically public comment is reserved for comments, not questions, but uh, you know, I can certainly anticipate this question coming at at town meeting as well.
And you know, that's something that that any board, any board member may may reach out to her and and have that discussion as to what their idea is, but we have, we don't have one as a board, so. But you're right, Brian and Marty, it's not a, once you start having discussion during public comment. You you. You know, you 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 start down the wrong path.
No, no, I'm just.
I would just ask the board to consider after the end of each agenda topic, if allowed by the special, you know, everything that you read at the beginning, Brian, and we read it at the beginning of our rec meeting, too, but. If it's permissible, then at the end of each agenda item, I'd suggest you do open it up to public question and comment, or else this dialogue can't happen.
No, understood, and uh, I have been trying to do that as we're going along as, but, you know, trying to. Keep the meeting going. I'm not always as. The not I not always seeing the little blue hands as as quickly as I should as well, so it's not the easiest.
Yeah.
Environment to hold a meeting also, so as the new chair will find out someday, so. Um, so I, you know, I understand that, well, um. But, you know, I I I think that's a question that we need to take into consideration for our upcoming meeting on Monday, so thank you for offering that.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep. Paul, I know, Mr. Semino, I know you had your little blue hand up. Do you still have a comment?
I do. I have I have more than one. I'll keep them all very quick that.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Sorry, Paul Semino, three Austin Kelly Lane. It's fair enough, Brian, because I am speaking not right now and not as the moderator, but um all all three of my comments are as a former selectman. Um, one, I I raised my hand when you were talking about dissolving the Main Street. One, I raised my hand when you were talking about dissolving the Main Street working group, I, I don't disagree with the decision to do so. But I think it's important for the public to understand that two members of that, of that working group are now selectmen on this, on this screen. And, and so the legacy of that group lives on. And, and I think the reason why it's important to make note of that is because when we formed the, the working group and back when I was on the board, it was with the promise that the working group would stay engaged through the completion of the project. For reasons that may not be as important today, because now the state has taken over construction. But to the extent the public relied on that, I wanted to acknowledge it, and again, reiterate that, that two of the, the, the members of that group are now members of this board, and so the legacy and the oversight is, is represented in that regard. And, and so I would just, it's not a question, it's just a comment and something I think people should be aware of. My second point is with regard to public comment, I think, I think there's always an opportunity to remind the public when you, when you go to public comment, that public comment is, is of, of course, something that we should have and is always invited. And, and not everyone understands the reason why it's not, it's, it's public comment and it's not public discussion, right? Because anything anyone may choose to talk about during public comment isn't necessarily on your agenda. And therefore, the public at large has not had, does not have the ability or the, or, or, or has not been forewarned that a discussion of that type might ensue in the meeting. So it is not the avoidance of engagement with the public, in fact, it's the opposite. And I, as a practice, would encourage you to let people know that something they raise during public comment that needs follow-up can always be added to a future agenda. And, and it's not a mechanism, frankly, to just avoid dialogue, but it is an open meeting law issue, as, as, as has been alluded to tonight. And finally, I just want to add my voice to the chorus of congratulations to Lisa for a term well-served and possibly more to come, and to Dan, for, for nine years of, of service as a selectman. You know, has, no selectman in my memory has served longer, and, and your service is, is duly noted, you know. Being in the arena is no small feat, simply being in it is no small feat, and for being in it as long as you have, you should be, you should be congratulated, and I enjoyed my time serving with you as well, so I just wanted to have that be my last point.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the words from Teddy Roosevelt.
Alright.
My blue hand is down, Brian.
Pardon me, Paul?
My blue hand is down.
Your blue hand is now down, Mr. Donovan has his
I'm Ryan Donovan, I'm a non-resident, but I'm the library director.
Hi, Ryan, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ryan Donovan, I'm a non-resident, but I am the library director. I just, just in regards to Mark's comments about town staff coming back next week, I just wanted to share with the board that the library staff has been coming back in advance of that. So we formally reported back to work on May 18th, but we actually sort of had a kind of a soft launch after the 11th of May, this was based on April 29th trustee meeting, where board members had sort of asked me if there were projects for people to be working on in the building with the understanding that some library staff in some surrounding towns had been going in. So I've had numerous discussions with Mark, with Chief Achilles and with Emily and Miko, and I would just like to, to sing their praises for one small moment on giving me their time and their expertise on trying to set up the library facility in a way that we can maintain social distancing and have the library staff work. So you know, when, when you talk about town staff coming back, I just want to share with you that some town staff at the library are already back now. So that's, other than that, just a small plug for look for announcements coming very shortly on the library offering curbside service, there may be an announcement over the weekend for June 8th. So I will just kind of hopefully pique your interest and look forward to that, and just sharing that with residents that curbside service is an option coming from their library soon.
Thank you, Ryan, appreciate that update. Anybody else with additional public comment? If you do, click your raise hand button. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. Kalenda?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Bracio, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bracio, your vote? Mr. Kalenda? Mr. Healy?
Nay, I want Lisa and Dan to have to stay longer.
Aye, Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody, stay safe.